Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome. Welcome to members of the public. And members, it's the first time I think we have met since the start of 2015. So Happy New Year to you all. Let's move on then to the agenda itself. But before we go there, perhaps I could remind everybody firstly, there is no plan for a fire alarm test this evening. So that if you hear a continuously ringing bell, then there could be a fire somewhere in the building. We should vacate it as quickly as possible via the green mark exits one behind you there, one over here, and one to my right here. We congregate under the canopy outside Waitrose. Can we please switch off our mobile phones or switch them to silent? And members, we are being webcast. So can you please make sure that you speak closely to the microphone and make sure that the appropriate card is plugged in? Moving on then, item one, the minutes of our meeting held on the 17th of November, which have been laid on the table there for the last half hour or so. Is your wish, members, that I sign them as a correct record? Thank you very much. Item two, apologies for absence, Emma, and declarations of substitutes.
Okay, we have apologies chairman from councillors Simon Inchbold, Elizabeth Cable and John Ward. Councillors Jim Edwards and Adam Taylor Smith are attending as substitutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Disclosure of interests?
None received before the meeting.
Any late disclosures at all, members? I'm not sure that I need to disclose any interest. I am the local member, but...
Okay, it's an opportunity.
Okay. And I think Mrs Ellis is also another local member as well. No other disclosures at all? We will move on then. Questions by members of the public?
None received, chairman.
Thank you. Applications for planning permission, item A1 WA 2014/0912. This is an outline planning application with a reservation for subsequent approval of appearance, landscaping, layout and scale, all reserve matters for the erection of up to 425 dwellings, including affordable homes and associated works and new access points onto Allfold Road and Noel Lane, Cranley. This application affects Bridleway 566 and is accompanied by an environmental statement at land south of the High Street between Allfold Road and Noel Lane, Cranley, as amended by letters dated the 3rd of June 2014, 5th of December, plans received on the 4th of September and the 7th of October 2014, and 19th of November, and as amplified by email dated the 10th of July 2014, letters dated the 12th of August, 13th of August, and by emails dated the 3rd of October and the 21st of November 2014. Barry, I believe. Sorry. Matthew. Before you start, Barry, perhaps for the benefit of members of the public, I might introduce those officers sitting around the table. The next person to speak will be Matthew Evans, who is the head of planning. To his right is Barry Lomax, who is team leader for, I think, Eastern Central. To his right is Brian Chamberlain from Odyssey Marquitos, who is our flooding consultant. Elizabeth Sims, Democratic Development Control Manager, sorry. Barry, Barry, our legal Beagle, and Richard Cooper from Surrey County Council Highways. Welcome to all of you. The floor is yours, Matthew.
Thank you, chairman. Just a reminder that the application was reported to the Joint Planning Committee on the 28th of October 2014 and was deferred by members to allow time for officers to address the concerns of Surrey County Council, who are the lead local authority with regards to surface water flood risk, and in particular, the safe access and egress to the application site in a flood event. Members, can I also draw your attention to a letter we received from the Secretary of State at 4pm this afternoon? That is attached to your update sheet. In effect, what this letter says is that in exercise of his powers under the Town and Country Planning Development Management Order, the Secretary of State has directed the council not to grant planning permission without his specific authorisation. Now, this letter does not fetter your ability to consider the application on its merits in accordance with relevant policies and other material considerations, and that should continue to be your focus. Just a few words about the explanation of the direction. The effect of the Secretary of State's direction is that the committee can still choose to refuse the planning permission. They can actually make a decision on that if they so wish. However, if the committee concludes that it wishes to support the application, it may only resolve that it is minded to grant permission. An actual decision cannot be made without the specific authority of the Secretary of State. What that allows the Secretary of State to do is to come to a view as to whether he wants to call in the application for his decision. That would entail a public inquiry in front of a planning inspector who would report to the Secretary of State. But he still may on reflection not call the application in. Just a few words by way of introduction to the application before you. This is the largest greenfield housing scheme to be considered by the committee post the publication of the MPPF. And I think it's important just to remind the members of the national policy context, and particularly what the MPPF says about applications of this type. Firstly, you will be aware of the major shift in national policy on house building set out in the MPF, the MPPF. The MPPF is unashamedly pro-growth. The MPPF has a key aim of significantly boosting the supply of housing, primarily through an updated local plan with its expectation of meeting need and demand for housing where it's sustainable. It does also make clear that councils should ensure a five-year supply of housing. As the report sets out, Waverley does not currently have five years' worth of supply, and the weight to be attached to this and the wider benefits of meeting housing need are set out in the report. That position has worsened slightly as a consequence of the publication of the latest draft Strategic Housing Market Assessment, which identifies an unvarnished need for 512 dwellings per annum. What the lack of five-year supply highlights is the immediate need to increase the supply of housing, both for market and affordable housing. The second issue I wanted to highlight is the implication of emerging plans and prematurity arguments. The planning system is by law plan-led, and there is some logic in the argument that decisions on major releases of land for development should be made as part of the plan-making process rather than via the planning application process. However, both Waverley's local plan and Cranley Parish Council's neighbourhood plan are not sufficiently advanced to carry any weight at the present time. That weight only occurs once they're at publication stage, which has not been reached. As you'll be aware from the recommendation, our assessment is that the MPPF and the technical guidance which accompanies it does not give grounds for resisting the scheme on grounds of prematurity. In the report, we have set out for members consideration in full the relevant guidance on page 98. Just a little bit more on prematurity, because the NPPG usefully gives some examples of prematurity, and I will read these out. Development is so substantial or its cumulative effect would be so significant that to grant planning permission would undermine plan-making process and the emerging plan is at an advanced stage. And I think it's useful to note that the word 'and' suggests that both criteria need to apply for prematurity to be a strong ground for resisting a scheme. The development proposed is so substantial that officers' view is that these circumstances do not apply, and that prematurity would not be the basis for resisting the scheme. Hopefully, those words are useful in terms of general introduction and the government context. And I'll pass over now to Barry, who will take you through the scheme.
Thank you, Matthew. Good evening, members, and Happy New Year. Following our meeting on October the 28th, I've formulated on screen in front of us some of the major issues that have been shared from members to me in that period, and that is the presumption in favour of sustainable development, flood risk, the proportion of affordable housing, transport issues and infrastructure. They will be covered in detail, no doubt, through the debate, but also through the presentation. If I now take you to an aerial view of the application site, we'll all be familiar with the application site. It is to the south of the High Street, south of Stockland Square in Cranley. Here we have a plan showing the application site. Now, looking at some photographs, here is a view looking north up Noel Lane towards the High Street. Here we have a view looking south along Noel Lane. The site is to the right-hand side of this photograph. Then we have some photographs of the Downs Link between the site and the built-up part of Cranley, and then we have views across the site. Many members will have been on the site visit held sometime in October, and also with myself and a couple of members on a day in December. Here we have a view of the application site looking towards Hewitt's Industrial Estate. Now, we're moving west along the site, and we're looking at a view looking south along Allfold Road. And now we're going on to the proposal in general. Now, this is an outlined planning application with all matters reserved except for means of access. Now, what does that mean? That means that this is an application for an in-principle decision on the provision of 425 homes with only means of access for determination. Now, means of access is as on the screen behind me. It covers accessibility for all routes to and within the site, as well as the way they link up to other roads and pathways outside of the site. All other issues that aren't highlighted in red are issues that are dealt with at a future stage if members are minded to grant permission under a reserve matters application. Looking at the proposal, it is for outline planning application with means of access, the only reserve matter in front of you at this stage. It is for 425 dwellings, 128 of which would be affordable, which is a 30% provision. The average density on site would be about 20.4 dwellings per hectare. Vehicular access would come from Noel Lane and Allfold Road. Allfold Road would serve the bulk of the proposed dwellings, 375, Noel Lane serving 50 of the proposed dwellings. The style of the proposal is perimeter blocks with a centrally-located vista. Looking at the housing mix, the table on screen behind me shows you that it will be a mix of ones, twos, threes, fours and five beds, with a percentage as indicated on the screen. Looking at the affordable housing, again, that would be spread from shared ownership and rented from between one and four-bed properties. With regard to play areas and open space, there is a proposal for seven areas of play and two large areas of locally landscaped areas. Again, you'll see the figures behind me on the screen. Here we have an illustrative master plan showing the application site. Here we have the Noel Lane and Allfold Road. The site is separated at this location here, yes, you can see that on the screen, with 50 dwellings this side, 375 dwellings the other side, with an opportunity for emergency access through the site in cases of emergency. Here we have a colour illustrative master plan, which I think members who came in a site visit would have had this, showing the site in slightly more detail. Here we have a plan showing the ancient woodland and other existing green features on site which are set to remain. This area here is the ancient woodland, and here we have the existing boundary treatments of the farm fields. What I have now is a few artistic impressions of how the site may look. You'll note that it is proposed, although this is a reserve matter, that materials would be commensurate with the Surrey vernacular, same with the designer buildings, they would also be of the Surrey vernacular. So here we have a few artistic impressions. This is a plan of that central vista I spoke of before, leading on to a main apartment building to the north of the application site, and again, some further character areas. As I alluded to at the first slide, one of the major issues here is flooding and the location of existing watercourses. Here we have the existing Nuthurst Stream, which runs through the application site north to south, and then we have the Little Mead Brook running east to west. What we have in front of us now is the modelled flooding plan submitted by the applicants, which has been endorsed by the Environment Agency. If you were to look on the Environment Agency's website, you would see a different flooding plan than what's in front of you. It has been remodelled by the applicants, and the agency, Environment Agency, has endorsed it, and this is the plan with regards to one in a thousand-year floodplain. As you'll see, all of the proposed buildings are within flood zone one, which is an area at the lowest probability of flooding. The application includes a suite of onsite flood mitigation. They are permeable paving, underground cellular storage, interconnecting swales. As I've already said, all dwellings are within flood zones one. In addition, all residential development would have a finishfall level set at least 300mm above the adjacent 10100 year plus climate change flood levels. Soffit levels for both crossings over the streams would be 600mm above the 10100 year, including climate change peak flood levels. And non-return valves will be installed on all outfalls to restrict the backing up of any site drainage systems when the levels in Nuthurst Stream at Little Mead Brook are high. In addition, and one of the major reasons for deferring the decision last time at committee was flooding on Allfold Road and the late comment from the lead local flood authority with regards to safe access and egress on to Allfold Road. These proposals have come about as a result of that. So what do we have? We have off-site flood mitigation proposals for the provision of swales on Allfold Road to intercept flows before they get into the highway and to redirect limited flows back to the river before flooding the highway. We have a change in highway drainage from gullies to dropped curbs, open channels, and we have a proposal to lower the Western Verge to curb height as a backup if the new gullies get blocked or there is an extreme rainfall event. What do these look like? They look like what we have on screen in front of us. These are the proposed dropped curb drainage as opposed to the gully holes you see along Allfold Road presently, and this is the location of where they will be changed. This is Little Mead Industrial Estate. Here I'm indicating is the area which at the moment is prone to flooding. This application would see the verge reduced in height, as indicated on the screen, with these dropped-down gullies put in place. The application also proposes a footpath which links on the root-and-drawing on the screen in front of you to the pavement here, so as to provide safe access and egress in times of a flood event. On screen, probably far too little typed for you to read through in detail, but they are the proposed network improvements on the highway, which are covered in greater detail in the officer's report, and the officer from the County Highways Authority is here to answer any specific questions in relation to those highway network improvements and to these highway network improvements. As you'll see, there is a suite of improvements proposed so as to accommodate the proposal in terms of capacity and safety on the highway network. The figure in front of us is taken from the transport assessment, and it highlights the key junctions on the local highway network and some areas of junction improvements in the bottom right-hand side of the screen in front of you. Now I take you on to the determining issues. As is usual, they're separated into areas of technical judgment and to areas or matters of judgment. So these are the matters of principle, technical judgment. First of all, we look at the presumption in favour of sustainable development. What does that mean? Well, paragraph 197 of the framework tells us that we must deal with planning applications in line with the presumption in favour of sustainable development. This is echoed in paragraph 47, and is explained at paragraph 14. It means that local planning authorities should grant planning permission unless any adverse impacts of doing so would significantly and demonstrably outweigh the benefits when assessed against the policies in the framework taken as a whole. So that is that any adverse impacts are not just to outweigh the benefits, they are to significantly and demonstrably outweigh the benefits. Looking then at prematurity, Matthew has gone through prematurity in terms of this application, and it is unlikely to justify a refusal, other than where it is clear that the adverse impact of granting permission would significantly and demonstrably outweigh the benefits, in line with that presumption explained at paragraph 14 of the framework. Now going on to environmental impact assessment, this is an application subject to an environmental impact assessment. It has an environmental statement submitted with it, and officers conclude that the environmental statement is considered to satisfactorily address all relevant issues with regards to likely significant effects on the environment. Now moving on to loss of agricultural land, these are agricultural fields, and there would be some loss. However, the framework tells us, and our policies in our local plan tells us, that we should resist the loss of the best and most versatile agricultural land. Now, the council has appointed independent consultants, and they have confirmed that the proposal would not result in the loss or alienation of the best and most versatile agricultural land, and would not result in the fragmentation of an agricultural holding so as to seriously undermine the economic viability of remaining holding. Now on to housing land supply. Matthew spoke to this earlier in the presentation, and the latest estimates suggest that Waverley has a housing land supply of only 3.7 years, 1.3 years short of the five years required by the National Planning Policy Framework. Now, this invokes through paragraphs 47, 48 and 49 of the framework the requirement to deal with this application in line with the presumption in favour of sustainable development, and that lack of a five-year housing land supply is a significant weight in determining process. Now turning to highway considerations, the impact on traffic and parking. Paragraph 32 of the framework directs that development should only be prevented or refused on transport grounds where the residual cumulative impacts of development are severe. Now, this application has been subject to detailed consideration by the County Highways Authority, and they conclude that whilst the scheme would result in increased traffic movements, traffic modelling has identified the need for highway improvements, the County Highway Authority does not raise any objection, and therefore it is not considered that the proposal would have severe transport impacts. Now on to contamination on site. Based on historical and current land uses and the absence of sources of significant contamination in the near vicinity of the site, the site is considered to have a very low risk of ground contamination being present. A remediation and discovery strategy can be controlled by wave condition if members are minded. On to air quality. There is no air quality monitoring area in Cranley. However, the impact on air quality remains an important material consideration. Now, subject to suitable mitigation measures, particularly throughout the construction stage, it is concluded that impact on air quality would be acceptable. Now we move on to an area which has been subject to lots of public participation, and that is flooding and drainage considerations. Now, part of the site is within 20 metres of a river, and part of the site is within flood zones two and three. However, as the plan I indicated to you before demonstrates, all of the proposed dwellings would be in flood zone one, or flood zone one, rather. Now, looking at the sequential test. The sequential test ensures that a sequential approach is followed to steer new development to areas with the lowest probability of flooding. The sequential test undertaken by the planning authority, it is important to note that a sequential test is not undertaken by the applicants, it is undertaken by the planning authority based on information submitted, and that sequential test included 15 of our SHLA sites, the SHLA sites being the Strategic Housing Land Availability Assessment. So 15 of those sites have been identified around the Cranley area. 12 of the sites identified are not within flood zones two or three, and are therefore on the face of it sequentially preferable to the application site. However, given that the vast majority of the development proposed is in flood zones one, and given the wider sustainability benefits of this site, it is considered that this site is preferable in terms of the wider sustainability benefits, and also passes the exception test. So with regards to flooding, officers conclude, subject to the imposition of suitably worded planning conditions, securing the future approval of the detailed design and provision of both off-site highway surface water drainage works and onsite surface water drainage works based on the principles of sustainable drainage, and subject to a layout being agreed at the reserve matter stage that would ensure all residential development is located within flood zones one, we conclude that the development would be safe for its lifetime, taking into account the vulnerability of its users, and would not increase flooding elsewhere, would reduce flood risk overall, and that is with the betterment proposed on Allfold Road, and moreover, it is considered the development would be appropriately flood-resistant and would make provision for safe access and escape routes where required, and would ensure that within the site, the most vulnerable development is located in areas of lowest flood risk. Archaeological considerations, given the size of the site, it is incumbent on the applicants to undertake a desktop archaeological assessment. The impact on archaeological interests can be sufficiently controlled through the imposition of planning conditions. This is not a site of high archaeological merit. In regards to infrastructure, the local planning authority has entered into detailed discussions with numerous infrastructure providers, and the applicant has expressed a willingness to enter into a suitably worded legal agreement to secure the relevant contributions. Those contributions are on the screen behind. So they are contributions towards education, library, playing pitches, casual play space, recycling, environmental improvements. There's a whole range of those improvements. So these are improvements relating to infrastructure. What we also have is comments from Thames Water. They do not object to the proposal, and we have also sought comments from the Care Commissioning Authority, from Surrey Health and from Surrey Public Health. None of the bodies have come back identifying any infrastructure requirements. A contribution towards policing of 35,000 is also included. Looking now at the financial considerations, as you will know, local financial considerations are defined as grants from government or sums payable to the authority under the Community Infrastructure Levy, SIL. So this means that the new homes bonus is capable of being a material consideration, and the head of finance has calculated an indicative figure of £1,450 per net additional dwelling, a total of £616,240 per annum for six years. A supplement of £350 over a six-year period is payable for all affordable homes on the proposal. Looking at biodiversity and compliance with habitat regulations, officers are cognisant of the responsibility under section 40 of the Natural England and Rural Communities Act, and also the requirements of the framework with regards to arresting the decline in biodiversity value of the countryside. The proposal has been designed so as to retain existing watercourses, drainage ditches and hedgerows, and is concluded that the scheme would minimise the harm caused to biodiversity. However, the scheme does propose cutting through the existing ancient woodland, and this would result in irreparable damage to that ancient woodland and some impact on biodiversity. However, subject to conditions, officers raise no objection to biodiversity grounds with regards to those recommendations in the ecology reports being secured through wave condition. Now we're on to matters of judgment. Affordable housing. Members will be aware that the local plan is silent with regards to the delivery of affordable dwellings in locations such as this. That is to say that the local plan only has policies with regards to provision of affordable housing within settlement boundaries or on schemes neighbouring our villages. Given that this is not one of the RD1 villages in the local plan, and given that this proposal is not within a settlement, we do not have, or the plan is silent with regards to affordable housing policies with this regard. However, paragraph 50 of the framework tells us we must be meeting our objectively assessed needs, and that encovers for affordable housing, and we must be making sure that sites make for a mixed and balanced community. To achieve this end, the application proposes 128 units, which is 30% of the proposal, which of course, if this site was within a settlement boundary, we would be looking for 30%. This 30% has been rigorously tested by a financial viability appraisal submitted by the applicants, and has been independently verified by consultants appointed by the local authority. The scheme is not able to provide more than 30% units on site and still be viable. That is agreed by independent consultants. However, notwithstanding that, and following the meeting on October the 28th, the applicant has made an offer of a cumulative sum of £600,000 in respect of off-site affordable housing. The applicants have indicated that they are able to make this additional contribution on the basis of a commercial view of avoiding the possible costs associated with a planning appeal and the benefits to the company of securing an early planning consent. This is an offer that sometimes crops up in situations like this. Looking now at the location of development, paragraph 55 of the National Planning Policy Framework directs that to promote sustainable development in rural areas, housing should be located where it will enhance or maintain the vitality of rural communities. The framework only tells us we should not allow houses if they are isolated, that is to say, would not maintain the vitality of rural communities. This site is well-located in terms of Cranley High Street, accesses to Cranley and facilities, and therefore is not isolated for the purposes of paragraph 55. Looking now at paragraph 50 of the framework, we spoke about this briefly just a second ago. This directs the local authority that we should be providing for a wide choice of high-quality homes, widen opportunities for home ownership, and create sustainable, inclusive and mixed communities. We consider as officers that a proposed size-type tenure and range of housing would meet this end. So the proposed mix and density are considered to be appropriate. What we have behind me now is a plan that shows areas of Cranley with regards to their average density. What I can't do is tell you what the average density is all around Cranley, I can only pick certain areas in locality. Now, this is about 20 dwellings per hectare, which is not... Now, this is twenty, about twenty dwellings per hectare, which is not outside of the norm when you look at Cranley as a whole. We range from fourteen dwellings per hectare to twenty-seven point two dwellings per hectare. It is in the areas, the parameters of density within the settlement of Cranley. Looking now at impact on countryside beyond the green belt and landscape, we all know that paragraph seventeen of the framework tells us that we're making decisions, we should have regard to the roles that areas play, and the intrinsic character and beauty of the countryside. The site is currently open field, and this will be replaced by substantial built form. It is noted that the established hedgerows would be retained as green infrastructure, and that well-treed established boundaries of the site would also be retained. However, the proposal would result in significant harm to short distance views into the site, particularly from southern parts of Cranley. However, the longer distance views into the site are fairly limited due to the extensive boundary screening. So overall, officers conclude that the moderate negative impact on the countryside is to be balanced against all other considerations. Turning our attention now to impact on visual amenity and trees, whilst indicative layout and design of the residential development are considered to be attractive and would respond well to the character of Cranley, it is concluded that the proposed development would result in material harm to the visual amenity by virtue of urbanising effect on the character of the area and the loss of the irreplaceable ancient woodland. However, this harm must be balanced against the benefits of the scheme, taking into account the mitigation which would be secured by way of planning condition. Looking at residential amenity, although in outline, and as discussed, matters of layout will be dealt with at reserve matter stage if members are minded to grant. Looking at the illustrative plans, officers consider that sufficient evidence has been submitted to demonstrate that, subject to detailed consideration at the future stage, the scheme could be developed that would not have a detrimental impact on the residential amenities of existing or proposed residents. Looking at provision of amenity and play space, our policy H ten and guidance in the framework tells us how important it is for play space and amenity space, and as I indicated earlier on in the slides, the application proposes significant amount of play space and open space within the scheme. Looking at crime and disorder, the Crime and Disorder Act nineteen ninety-eight places an obligation on the authority in discharging its functions to have regard to minimising crime. Officers consider that, given that layout is for future consideration, that this can be dealt with at a condition stage, but notwithstanding, there is sufficient space on site to ensure that any design would take into account the needs to minimise crime. In addition, a commuted sum of thirty-five thousand is payable towards Surrey Police as part of the proposal. Looking now at community facilities, the scheme proposes the provision of commuted sum towards existing facilities in Cranley, as opposed to the provision of community building on site. This is a positive element of the scheme to be balanced against other issues. Turning our attention to health and wellbeing, as I said on screen behind me, the provision of open space is an important and a positive element of the proposal, and notwithstanding, we have a, conditions would minimise the risk of pollution, and a commuted sum could be made available to existing services facilities in Cranley, as opposed to on-site provision for community buildings, something we've already covered in the last slide. So officers conclude that the proposed development would ensure that health and wellbeing and health infrastructure have been suitably addressed in the application. It's important to note at this point that the local authority has contacted, as I said, the Care Commissioning Authority, Surrey Public Health, Surrey, there's about five public health bodies all listed in the report, none of which have come forward asking for any contributions or highlighting any deficiencies in the area. Now, we're on to the update sheet. If I can take you to the update sheet, which is in front of you. We have a number of amendments to plan numbers in conditions one to nine. On page seventy-three of the report, a reference is made to a contribution of forty-six thousand, five thousand, and of course, that is a figure that doesn't exist, it's forty-six thousand, five hundred. And then we have in conditions thirty-eight and thirty-nine in the report, references made to HAD reports, this should be HDA reports. Twenty-five additional letters of representation have been received, raising issues highlighted there, these issues are covered in the officer's report. In addition, a late information has been received, which I understand has gone to all members from the Cranley Civic Society, relating to a legal opinion regarding the sequential test, along with information relating to flooding. Now, officers consider that this is covered fully in the officer's report, however, if any questions are raised, we're more than happy to answer them. We then have additional comments from the agent with regards to the figure quoted for potential works to the Downs Link. Now, initially, those figures were two hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred, however, Surrey County Council has agreed that that contribution is a hundred thousand, not two hundred and eleven thousand, and that is set out, or would be set out as part of a legal agreement. Officer comments is that the information submitted by Cranley Civic Society is covered in full in the officer's report, and we are here to answer any questions if members have any questions relating to that. We have a couple of amendments to conditions, and then we go on to the revised recommendation, which is that having regard to the environmental information contained in the application, the accompanying environmental statement and responses to it, together with proposals for mitigation, subject to the applicant entering into appropriate legal agreement by the twenty-eighth of March two thousand and fifteen, to secure the provision of contributions towards affordable housing, highway and transport improvements, highway drainage improvements along Allfor Road, education, libraries, playing pitches, provision and ongoing maintenance of play space and open space, sports/leisure centres, community facilities, recycling, environmental improvements, improvements to the Downs Link, policing, and for setting up of a management company, and subject to conditions, and the revised conditions thirty-eight and thirty-nine, and subject to no calling under section seventy-seven of the Town and Country Planning Act nineteen ninety as amended, permission be granted. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Barry. Do you wish to add anything at all, Elizabeth?
No, not at this stage, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Moving on then, ladies and gentlemen, it's now public speaking time, and we have four speakers, five minutes each group. First, the objectors, Mrs Townsend, and Mr Clark. I assume you've already been briefed, you have five minutes, I think you will have a green light to start off with, it will change to amber when you have one minute left, and when it gets to red, I will invite you to wind up whoever is speaking, but it's up to you how you expect your five minutes. When you're ready, please go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Liz Townsend, and I'm leader of the Cranley Civic Society. The first reason why this application should be refused is that it is based on a serious error in planning procedure, a wrongly applied flood risk sequential test. We understand that the planning officers are not going to consider our barrister's opinion on the sequential test against this application, due to it not being received by Friday. They do tell us that someone with legal training that sits on this council, on the JPC, has looked at the opinion informally, and some points were raised. This afternoon, our barrister, Mr Wells, has addressed these points. I will read this clarification to you. These are Mr Wells's words. Firstly, I briefly refer in my opinion to the technical guidance, TG, published to supplement the MPPF, in a chronological discussion of policy and guidance, in the section of the opinion on the catchment area. I conclude at the end of that section, which is mostly based on the planning practice guidance, that Waverley Borough Council acted lawfully in agreeing the reduced catchment area. I do not refer to the technical guidance in the later section of the opinion on the WSP report. The fact that the planning practice guidance postdates the technical guidance is therefore irrelevant, and does not call into question my opinion. Secondly, the Environment Agency has advised waverly that it should be satisfied, in accordance with paragraphs one hundred and one of the MPPF, that there are no other reasonably appropriate sites at lower risk, lower flood risk. But WSP, on behalf of the applicant, has concluded that there are reasonably available appropriate sites at lower flood risk. The officer report concludes in the section on flood risk sequential test, that a sequential test has been undertaken for the proposed development sites identified from the SHLA within Cranley, and that the moral lane site is lower down the ranking. In the circumstances, I fail to see how members can properly be advised that the sequential test has been met. The Environment Agency has also advised that Surrey County Council should assess the application as lead local flood authority. That concludes Mr Wells's words. Councilors should be aware, therefore, that an incorrectly applied sequential test is a clear ground for refusal of planning permission. Evidence elsewhere shows that a refusal on this basis is unlikely to result in a successful appeal by the developer. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr, sorry, Mr Chairman, and ladies and gentlemen. I'm Adrian Clark, Vice Chairman of the Cranley Society, and a Fellow of the Chartered Institute of Building. Were this application to have been approved this evening, it would have been without the drainage for this site having yet been assessed by Surrey County Council, the lead local flood risk authority, because it is not yet a statutory consultee. The financial cost of rectifying any mistakes will fall on individual householders and taxpayers. The government recognises this as a problem, and has been working to plug the gap in the system. Accordingly, the Secretary of State, Eric Pickles, announced a few weeks ago, on the eighteenth of December, that from the sixth of April two thousand and fifteen, lead local flood authorities, in our case Surrey County Council, will become the statutory consultee for assessing, approving and adopting sustainable drainage systems. I have to excuse my ass, I'm sorry. Detailed work by the Cranley Society casts serious doubts on the assessment of the proposed drainage systems, which will have to deal an area the size of twenty-nine football pitches, that is bordered by an Environment Agency main river, and contains nearly seven acres of medium and high-risk flood areas in zones two and three. The applicant's own experts have advised in their flood risk assessment that rainwater cannot drain away through the ground because the ground is closed. Drainage will need to be achieved through a complex hierarchy of tanks and discharge systems to deal with the huge volume of water displaced by concreting over this area this size, sorry.
I have to ask you now, Mr Clark, to wind up.
I shall, thank you, Mr Chairman. I'll just do the last piece. When we were at the last joint planning committee with this application, the Secretary of State had yet to make his announcement. His recent statement can be used as material consideration when determining planning applications, because the government recognises that the need for certainty in terms of assessing flood risk and sustainable drainage is of primary importance to the sustainability of any development. This application should be refused on these grounds. Thank you, Mr Chairman, and if anyone wants to have a look at the statement on Mr Pickles, I've got a copy.
Thank you, Mr Clark. Thank you very much. Our next speaker for Cranley Parish Council is Mr Reed.
My just take a point that actually I've only one five-minute slot given and used, and not two five-minute slots.
Interesting point, but the five minutes is for both speakers, they do not get five minutes each. Mr Reed.
Good evening, members. Members should note that the Environment Agency maps, after almost a year, have not been amended and still currently show that a significant number of the proposed dwellings would be built on land in flood zones two and three. However, even assuming that the WSP model is correct, paragraph one hundred of the MPPF says, inappropriate development in areas of risk of flooding should be avoided by directing development away from areas at highest risk. Consideration of flooding applies equally to essential infrastructure, such as roads, as to the land on which the dwellings are to be built. The statement in the WSP report that the sequential test has been passed because all of the dwellings will be located in zone one misses the whole point of what should be considered in undertaking the sequential test. The sequential test requires that the site with potential flooding issues is compared with all other sites in the local authority district. However, even when limited to the fourteen sites in Cranley, it is clear from the WSP report that the sequential test with the Barclay site has not been passed. The WSP report identifies twelve sites in Cranley that are contained wholly in zone one, and they are therefore clearly preferred to the Barclay site on flood risk grounds. These sites alone have the capacity to exceed the requirement for market and affordable homes, and hence there is no special circumstances to consider inclusion of the Barclay site to meet local demand. Members should reject this application, as the sequential test has not been passed, and as such, the exception test becomes irrelevant. The officer's statement that there is a need for four hundred and eight affordable homes in Cranley is misleading. Their figure comes from table thirty-one of the SMLA, and this table also shows an unvarnished need for six thousand, two hundred and ninety-one affordable homes for the borough as a whole. This equates to three hundred and fifty per year. However, further considered evidence in paragraph five point seven four of the SMLA converges on provision of one hundred and seventy affordable homes as part of the four hundred and seventy homes annual total for the borough. As the evidence converges on one hundred and seventy affordable homes for the borough and not three hundred and fifty, it follows that the affordable need for Cranley reduces by the same proportion, i.e. from four oh eight to one hundred and ninety-eight. Since publication of the two thousand and thirteen SMLA, outline planning permission for a development of one hundred and twenty-five dwellings, including fifty affordable homes, has been granted. In addition, two other outline applications have been submitted, one for one hundred and forty-nine dwellings and the other for one hundred and twenty. Both of these sites are located wholly in zone one, and together will provide another eighty-one affordable homes. The total of one hundred and thirty-one affordable homes from these three sites alone will supply sufficient affordable homes to meet the need in Cranley up to the year two thousand and twenty-five. Affordable housing is at the centre of the report's case that the Barclay site provides wider sustainable benefits to the community. The foregoing analysis demonstrates that there are better ways to achieve that benefit, and hence the exception test is not met. Even had the site passed the sequential test, on both grounds, this application must be The government needs to ensure that development in areas of high flood risk is avoided, because the scheme they have agreed with the insurance industry for homes in high-risk areas does not cover any house built after January two thousand and nine. A home built after this date on a site which floods could find itself uninsurable, leading in the worst case to financial ruin for the occupiers. So councillors, you either need to refuse planning permission for this site, which you can do because government policy supports directing developments away from areas at higher risk of flooding. Otherwise, you need to be one hundred percent satisfied that this site will never flood in the future, because if it does, the consequences for the owners of those new homes could be very serious indeed, and would be the sole responsibility of Waverley Borough Council in such an emergency. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Reed. Very well timed. Mr Dory.
Point of order, Mr Chairman. I'm not sure whether the ban on the use of recording devices in this chamber has been lifted. If not, then we seem to have somebody doing that.
It's now permitted to use those devices, thanks.
Thank you very much, and our last public speaker is the applicant, Mr Adrian Brown.
Good evening, councillors, and I appreciate you allowing me to speak. Good evening, councillors, and I appreciate you allowing me to speak at this meeting. Obviously, I'm going to urge you to resolve to approve this planning application, subject to the Secretary of State deciding whether or not to retrieve the application for his own determination. That notwithstanding, there are three key points I would like to convey to you. First, that the homes we are proposing are needed now. Second, that this site is the most sustainable greenfield site in Cranly. And finally, that our scheme will be of the very highest quality. There is a genuine and urgent need to provide more homes across Waverley, and you'll all recognise that this is acknowledged in your emerging local plan, which proposes that further land is identified for the provision of at least another 5,000 homes in the borough. In order for Waverley to accommodate this level of development, land will need to be permitted at the edge of most of the main settlements in the borough, in addition to any possible development at Dunstford Aerodrome. Therefore, land at Cranly is required to help meet this need. These additional homes are needed now to meet current demand and to provide homes for local people. If permitted, this site will deliver, will be developed over the next five years, and will support a five-year housing land supply, thereby putting you in control of decisions on the location of future housing sites. We will deliver 425 homes, of which 128 will be affordable, the largest number of affordable homes on any single development in Waverley for many years. In addition, we have agreed through discussions with your officers that, notwithstanding the agreed position on viability, we will commit to pay a further payment of £600,000 towards the provision of housing in the borough. We believe that in addition to the contribution from brownfield sites such as Hewitt's Industrial Estate, the Barclay site at Noel Lane is the most sustainable greenfield site at Cranly. It is without doubt the closest to the heart of the village, meaning that residents of this development would be likely to make a significant number of trips, either by foot or cycle, to the facilities within the village centre. Furthermore, we estimate that the development will generate an additional £3 million of expenditure per annum in local shops and services in the village, thus helping to sustain key local businesses for the future. We are acutely aware of the legitimate concerns that have been expressed by local people about the threat of flood risk. Barclay has been working with the Environment Agency to ensure that the development of this site does not increase the risk of flooding in the village, that no homes will be built in the floodplain, and that there are safe routes during storm events. Some of the measures that will be implemented will materially improve the existing situation. For example, the highway works in Oldfold Road will improve the capacity of surface water drainage in storm events, meaning that the consequences of last winter's events being repeated in this location will be greatly reduced. The Environment Agency does not object, and I am also content to state that purchasers of dwellings within the development will be able to secure insurance for their properties. I would add that our access proposals onto Noel Lane have been designed so that they do not prejudice the future delivery of the Cranly Village Hospital, a position confirmed by the Highways Authority. Our development will invest more than £10 million in key infrastructure and community facilities, and Surrey County Council have confirmed they are satisfied that the development will not exacerbate traffic conditions. We are keen to see that the contributions within the Section 106 agreement are wing-fenced for expenditure in the village. Barclay has a reputation for the quality of the developments that it undertakes. We are passionate about place-making, and our ambition is to work with local people to create a scheme of the highest quality that is enduring and integrated into the community. We can point to numerous examples of our schemes in the local area where we have delivered upon the promises we made at the planning stage by building what we said we would build, such as the Highwood Development in Horsham, for example. If you are minded to resolve to approve our plans tonight, subject to the Secretary of State's deliberations, we are committed to working with you to ensure that this scheme is delivered to the highest standard and meet local aspirations. In closing, we say that these homes are needed now, that this site is the most sustainable in Cranly, and that if planning is granted, we will deliver on our promise to create a place of the highest quality that is integrated into one of Surrey's greatest villages. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr Brown? I wonder if you could please switch off the microphone now.
Of course.
Now it's the turn of the... Mr Taylor Smith.
Sorry, are we having comments from the floor yet, or questions?
Our next item is actually to allow the local ward member to speak, together with another councillor who has indicated that he would wish to speak as well.
I will let them speak.
Thank you. I will let them speak too. Firstly, the local ward member, Mrs Patricia Ellis. You have four minutes, and as the ward member, should there be any misunderstandings during the debate, you are welcome to come back and correct those.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm not totally opposed to some development in Cranly, which I believe is necessary for the village to thrive and prosper, and because of its close proximity to the centre of the village and all of its facilities, this site could be considered quite favourably. However, after very careful consideration of every issue in the agenda, I do not believe that the application before you is sustainable. Of all the potential sites in Cranly, this appears to me to be the most suitable for affordable homes, which Cranly does need. However, only 30% of the total number of homes will be affordable, and the sum of £600,000 offered for affordable housing elsewhere is at a yet-to-be-decided location that might not even be in Cranly. Cranly is largely built on its famous clay, and much of Cranly has historically suffered from flooding. We simply cannot afford to ignore local knowledge of climate change and the effects of changes in weather patterns that have led to significant increases in the incidence of damaging flash and longer-term flooding. Some areas of the site are in the floodplain, and with much of the rest of the site due to be covered in one way or another by concrete and hard-standing roads etc., there will be a significant intensification upsurge of water runoff that will hugely increase the ever-present risk of flooding, with the additional burden on residents who could find it difficult, if not impossible, to get home insurance. The existing waste water infrastructure is unable to accommodate the needs of this application, and conversely, the existing water supply is not always reliable, as is known to many residents in Cranly. The proposed development would be very dense and overcrowded, and would accommodate roads, community buildings and facilities, plus 425 homes, which is a huge number to shoehorn into this site. I find it totally unacceptable that there are just two points of access for vehicular traffic, and both of these are onto narrow, winding country roads, and neither will be able to safely or adequately cope with the extra volumes of traffic generated by this site. The access point in Oldfold Road is in an area of regular flooding, and the access onto Noel Lane is close to its junction with the Cranly High Street, where lengthy delays are already experienced. There are few employment opportunities within the village, and we are already aware, as has been mentioned, of an application nearby to develop housing on one of the few industrial estates. So we can take it as a given that many residents of this proposed development will need to use their cars to get to work, which will greatly add to the traffic congestion that already exists on poorly maintained and very unsuitable roads. We should not ignore the rights of the residents already living in the area, who will suffer a permanent loss of the amenity value of the area. In terms of scale, this development is very large, and because of its close proximity to the centre of Cranly, it will have a huge and irreversible impact on the village. And I believe that this application, in its present form, will greatly harm the nature and character of the area. We really cannot afford to make any mistakes, and as it stands at the moment, I believe that there are simply too many reasons why this application is unacceptable and unsustainable. I would respectfully request...
I have to ask you to wind up now, please, Mrs Ellis.
Thank you. I am winding up. I would respectfully request that the members of this committee support the residents of Cranly, and the views of the parish council, as so eloquently expressed by councillor Reed, by refusing this application before you this evening. Thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you. If we could restrain our enthusiasm, please. I rather feel that I may not get any dinner when I get home. However, that is not necessarily a material consideration. Mr Holder, I believe you would like four minutes as well.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. When I first put my name down to speak this evening, I did so to object to this application because I believed it to be an overdevelopment, and its refusal by this committee would save Cranly. I now realise that quite the opposite is the case. The site has been designed to facilitate non-vehicular access to and from Cranly High Street, and that the two roads at either end of this development, the Oldfold Road and Noel Lane, can accommodate the excess traffic, but only just. Thames Water has confirmed that this development is sustainable, both from the supply of water and the sewage capacity, and although the mix of affordable housing, shared ownership and market value housing does not meet the council's requirements under its Shma, the offer of £600,000 by the developer to build additional affordable houses off-site makes this development acceptable. In addition, the risks of flooding have been dealt with under the applicant's flood risk assessment, and its recommendations and mitigating measures must be implemented prior to the occupation of any of the housing under Condition 23. In short, this application ticks all the boxes, and it seems highly likely that if this application is refused by this committee, it will be approved on appeal. The total housing proposed for Cranly, which includes Amlet's Lane, this application, the Noel Park Initiative, Hewitt's Industrial Estate and the Horsham Road scheme, amounts to an extra 1,085 houses. It would bring the edge of Cranly to within three fields of the A281, and within sight at Dunstford Aerodrome. The additional housing would almost be the equivalent of adding onto Cranly a village the size of Chittingfold. Such a vision is horrific to behold. It would destroy Cranly. It would also produce in Bramley a one perpetual traffic jam. Such a possibility must not be allowed to happen. By approving this application, the feeling is that Cranly, by providing an extra 550 houses, has more than met its obligations under the proposed local plan, and very much strengthens the council's ability to refuse any future developments on the basis that the available infrastructure will be at full capacity. Although I would rather the applicant had put forward his original, more spacious Stockland Square application, I would ask this committee to accept this application.
Thank you very much, Mr Holder. Members, it is now... Mr Taylor Smith.
Thank you, Chairman. I was going to ask a question of our officers, really, about this Article 25 direction, and what this means for us in terms of decision-making. I mean, three particular points is, if we are minded to refuse, can the applicant then appeal straight away? If we're minded to grant, what if it's not then called in by the Secretary of State? And third question, what is the timescale of the holding direction?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Well, the holding direction only stops the local authority from issuing an approval. It stops us from granting permission. It doesn't stop the committee from refusing, and it doesn't stop the committee from making a resolution to grant, subject to the Secretary of State not calling it in. So I think that answers what our position is. So as members, you are able to refuse, and the applicant will have a right of appeal against that refusal, or you're able to make a resolution to grant, subject to the applicant not entering in, or the... Sorry, subject to the applicant entering into a legal agreement and the Secretary of State not calling it in. So there are the two routes. With regards to timeframe, that is at the Secretary of State's, which he has as much time as he sees fit. At the moment, we have an open-ended, we're not allowed to issue a decision until he tells us otherwise. We have a similar situation in Ricardo Court, where we're waiting four months for the Secretary of State. Ricardo Court in Bramley, some members will have been familiar with that application, has taken four months for him to make a decision on whether to call it in or not. But in conclusion, members are permitted this evening to refuse or to mind to resolve to approve. It's an open-ended holding direction, and the applicant would have a right of appeal if it was refused.
Thank you very much. Mr Mariner.
Thank you, Chairman. If I could begin with a couple of questions as well. First of all, could we look at page 30 on the screen, please? It's a density plan.
That splits the... Good. Well, no, no, it's... That's the more broad one. It's this one here, which breaks the site down into different parts.
We don't have that, it's part of the presentation. Sorry.
No, but it's on page 30 of the pack, so if members could look at that, it'll make it easier for me to ask my question in a rational fashion. I mean, the first thing to say is that there quotes an average site density of 30.92, as opposed to the 20.4, and I'm grateful to know what the reason for the difference Mr Reed? Can you actually comment on the difference between the 20 and the 31?
So my understanding of the difference is, what we have in front of us is an average of the areas, as opposed to the whole site. So if you take the whole site and those areas that isn't, well, the areas that aren't developed, it's 20.4. If you just look specifically at the areas of built form, it comes at a high level of the 30.
Right, and I think it's clear from this that actually there's quite a variation with the Noel Park, Noel Lane end being quite low-density, and building up to very much higher densities as you get towards the east, the west, sorry. Right, my second question, has there been... What is the view of the officers on the groundwater flooding problem? This is not surface water, this is the fact that it's a basically very wet place, grounded on clay, and the risk that you will get an hydraulic effect forcing water up through the surface. I mean, has this been looked at by the relevant people?
Thank you. The application is accompanied by a flood risk assessment. Within that flood risk assessment are in excess of 40 boreholes taken across the site. Of those 40, nine of the boreholes indicate water within a metre of the surface. Now, that then goes on to inform where swales and where water attenuation tanks can go for future delivery of a sustainable drainage system, if members are minded to grant. It's important to note that those areas where surface water is present, is present within those boreholes, they are on the areas that are likely to have higher levels of flooding in any event, so they are areas that would not be developed for housing. Thank you.
They'd be where the gaps between the houses would be.
Before, if I may take you to... For, if I may take you to, sorry, if I, I can illustrate on the illustrative plan. So the areas of land, the boreholes that indicated water within a metre of the surface was located in this area here, which is areas within flood zones two and three in any event, and around the access point here. The rest, and a couple within the area at the bottom here. The rest of the boreholes did not show water within a metre of the surface.
Thank you. The last question is really to check that although the council's opinion was directed at WSP applying the sequential test, and you correctly pointed out, actually, we do it, but am I right that given that there's been, that the officer's report basically adopts the WSP approach without any modification?
So it is informed by the WSP information, inasmuch as WSP have merely regurgitated the evidence within the sustainability appraisal for part one of the local plan, with regards to the wider sustainability benefits of all sites, and they've assessed the 15 sites identified in the SLL. So with regards to the sites that have been identified and how we've assessed them from wider sustainability objectives, we are the same. With regards to how we've arrived at a conclusion, we may have arrived in a slightly different way, we have a look at paragraph 101, 102, 103 of the framework. 101 tells us that we should be looking at site, we should be steering development to areas at low level of flooding. However, as we're speaking, I'm trying to find it now, paragraph 101 tells us that development should not be allocated or permitted if there are reasonably available sites appropriate for the proposed development. Now, I've spoken to the Environment Agency this afternoon to discuss this issue, so I'll be able to advise members more accurately this afternoon. And in my discussions with the Environment Agency, we looked at other possible sites, the five sites that have been identified as being preferably sequential, preferable from a flooding sequential point of view. None of those five sites would produce the yield that this site would deliver, 425 homes over, in an area that is in need of housing, and nor are those, any of those sites at the prob, at this point in time, when members are making a decision, are they reasonably available. Now, the only other site that you may have is Hewitts. Now, Hewitts has a planning application in with the local authority, and we haven't arrived at a determination, but Hewitts has a major policy objection, and that is Hewitts is an identified employment site, and they would need to identify that that employment need at Hewitts is no longer required before we even get to a point of assessing that being an acceptable housing site. We are some way off that assessment with Hewitts. So to go back to your direct point, we have arrived at the same conclusion with WSP, using their evidence in their documentation, but in fact their evidence in their documentation is our evidence, but how we've arrived at that conclusion may be slightly different.
Okay, thank you for that. I think what that leads to is, are we sure that our interpretation of reasonably available is correct? Because to me, it's not clear that that means they've actually got to virtually have planning permission already. And given we're working in the context of a local plan, work-up period, when we've had a, when we've had a SLL, and that's why we've got 15 sites, where the owners have presumably had a reason for putting them forward, I must, I am uncomfortable with the idea that we should not be taking notice of those, because unless they were putting them forward for the SLL just for the fun of it, we must expect those sites to come forward, and I believe some of them have. And in fact, if you look at the total numbers, you will see they actually exceed the 425. So I think you can see where I'm going, that I'm not at all sure that we have actually followed the right methodology, because if you have got other sites in that set of 15 which are more sustainable on flood risk basis, and they total more than 425, it looks to me as though we're in a slightly difficult position. The way I see the sequential test working is that we have a palette of different sites, we don't know at the moment what our total local housing target will be, either generally or in Cranley, and if, let's say, to take a number which would not please any of the residents, I imagine, 1,500 homes were identified, to me it seems the test should be applied, that you work your way through, taking the least floodable sites first, and then if at the end you do need to have a site like this, then you take it at the end of the queue, so to speak. I think the point about Mr Wales' opinion is that we don't seem to have done that, we've just simply tried to amalgamate the sequential test and the exception test, which look to me to be very different animals, and one should be applied only after you've passed the sequential test, and yet you're not actually a superb site from a flood risk point of view. So have we got advice that reasonably available is as limited a meaning as you seem to suggest?
Thank you. Interestingly, when we're looking at definitions, we find them elsewhere in the framework, not necessarily under, under flooding, but what we do have in the framework is a definition of what is deliverable, and deliverable refers to that first five years. Is a site available within the first five years of a, of a planned period? Now, I think deliverable is commenced with reasonably available, and to be deliverable, it should have a planning permission. So if we are refusing this site because we, or if you are looking to refuse a site because you think it's not sequentially preferable in terms of flooding, and you're saying Hewitts is, is available, well, at the moment Hewitts isn't because it doesn't have that planning permission, and it has policy objections of its own. One thing that, when I looked at the council's opinion and spoke with members, including yourself this morning, and went to the Environment Agency this afternoon, the Environment Agency looked at the submission from WSP and arrived at the same conclusion, inasmuch as, I think WSP have made a slight mistake, inasmuch as they have two sections underneath the exception test, where they go on to talk about sustainability objectives. The Environment Agency suggests that if that, or those two paragraphs are moved up over the report and put in the sequential test element, that is to say, they've looked at all 15 sites, 12 are better from a flooding point of view, however, they discount them because they're not reasonably available or appropriate for the proposed development. The Environment Agency may be of opinion that this passes the sequential test. So we're in, in a strange area, and I appreciate, since the government have removed much guidance with regards to sequential tests, they've condensed what was a 100-page document in PPS25 technical guidance, 100-page document with regards to the NPPF technical guidance, we're now left with an NPPG that has three paragraphs on this. So we're left with those three paragraphs that tell us we must steer development to areas at least likely to flood. Now, one thing we do know with this site is, all the development is within flood zones one, the lowest level of flooding. We're told that development should not cause flooding elsewhere. Now, we know, subject to those highway improvement works on Allford Road, it won't cause flooding elsewhere, and indeed, there will be a betterment to the people of Cranley with regards to better drainage works on Allford Road. And then we're asked that in the event of a flood, can people access Negressi site safely? And given the work we've gone through with the county, the county lead local flood authority, we have a chap here from...
Aldersay Mardikies.
Aldersay Mardikies, yes. I promised myself I wouldn't make that mistake, but there we are. Aldersay Mark, I can't even say, Marquides, he's here. And one thing that I forgot to report back in the updates is we have had comments from Bhavasathan at the lead local flood authority this afternoon, where he raises no objection to the scheme, and he is happy, happy in principle with the proposal. In conjunction with that, the highway authority happy for it to take place on highway land, and the emergency planners at the county are happy with regards to the proposal.
Okay, well, thank you for that. I mean, I was going to start my proper remarks, I wanted to acknowledge the amount of work that's gone in, which has been considerable. I think the problem we, we have, and I speak as a Haysmore member who is, who was on the committee which got taken to the, to the High Court, and a procedural error was all that was needed for judicial review to be, to be granted. It may well be that in a better world, the paragraphs in 102, which you've referred to, should have been in 101, but they're not, and you will certainly find very few inspectors prepared to rewrite government policy on the hoof. So I do think that despite all you've said, Barry, and the thought that's gone into it, and the fact that in terms of the actual flood, flood risk, nonetheless, I think we've given ourselves a bit of a problem here, because I for one will not be able to accept that we've applied the sequential test correctly, and it'll be for other people, I suspect, to make a similar or different, different view. If I just go to my general remarks, I was actually not going to focus upon flooding. Strikes me the most obvious thing about this application is that it is placed in a site which is outside the settlement boundary, and it's countryside beyond the green belt, and although obviously the landscape has changed, forgive the pun, that is still something which we would not seek to develop without very good reasons. And even given the rather daunting language in the NPPF, I mean, I for one would have no hesitation in saying that losing the agricultural and rural views from the Downs Link facing Southwoods and replacing them with houses, no matter how well-designed, would be a very substantial piece of harm to the rural character of both Cranley and the, and the borough. We value our views, and we much prefer to look at trees rather than buildings, but obviously, one has to come to a balance. I think the balance has to be affected by the fact we don't yet know how many houses we're going to need, and I can't help noticing that we've been to public consultation, we've offered four scenarios for consideration, and scenario four was the one which happened to get the biggest popular support. Now, that's not binding on us, work will be done to see whether we can get anywhere close to the objectively assessed needs numbers. Other boroughs have had to go for local housing targets which are well below those, and we might too. But even if we were to stick to the 8,500 in scenario four, the total number of greenfield dwellings required of Cranley is only 300, which is substantially less than the size of this application on its own. When you add in the Amlet's Lane application, which has been granted, this, approving this would mean we were going to put 425, where only 175 might be needed. It seems to me that given the fact that if you do build on the sort of land we're talking about, it's gone forever as an, as a rural view, this is a very serious issue to, to address. And when I look at the other aspects of the, of the site, the lack of, the fact that we're only two accesses, the fact that densities in certain areas are very high indeed, we're talking about up to 55 dwellings per hectare in some, some corners, the fact there's some loss of ancient woodland, I mean, I think there are aspects to this application, despite the splendid works done by the developer to make it very attractive, which lead me to think that the sustainability benefits of it are not quite as high as, as one, one might think, and something to what other people have to, have to say. My feeling is that at the moment, when we haven't had the need for this number of homes in Cranley demonstrated through the local plan, I think it's too early to be approving this number of, of, of new homes, and I would say quite honestly that it could be different in a year or 18 months' time, when we have more information as to how many homes have to be asked of Cranley. So for the moment, I'm sadly, despite your splendid work on this, not minded to support the, the officer's recommendation, but I will listen to other people very carefully.
Thank you, Mr Mariner. Elizabeth, I think you wanted to come in.
No, Chairman, thank you. Barry did pick my point up, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mrs Fowesewski.
Thank you, Chairman. I thought that was so well put, it really was, it really captured the essence of everything that I wanted to say, but in a far more eloquent manner. Can I just take this opportunity as well to apologise to many of the residents who have contacted me, and I've not been able to get back to them, and I do apologise for that, I'm only human. Oh gosh, this is so emotive, it really is, it's, it's deeply upsetting for people of Cranley. For those members in this room tonight who are sitting on the fence, I think Eric Pickles' letters gives a very clear indication as to what decision we should be making here this evening. Quite frankly, I'm astonished, absolutely astonished, that this application has even got to this point. I'm even more astonished that the recommendation is for approval. Any comments I make in advance, I apologise to officers, please accept in the spirit that my comments are not personal, they're literally based on, on observation, researching, and so forth, and so forth. In fact, I feel for our officers, because I think they're under enormous pressure to deliver. However, this is far too important to patronise you, and it is not a reason to secure our five-year housing supply. Having gone through the report, much of it, I could pull apart, I really, I really could, I thought there was a lot of it in there that frustrated me. There was explanations, statements, detail, simply didn't stack up, and I didn't feel the report offered me the confidence that I needed. In areas, there was contradiction, one expert said this, another expert said that. Please, can someone at the very least take some responsibility and actually say it as it is and give us something constructive? I think we've already talked about a number of contradictions already. The application in itself raises many serious concerns. Least of all, it's the second-largest strategic application on a greenfield exception site. Now, there's exception to policy and there's an exception site. Officers have failed, I believe, to give members an opportunity to have technical briefings on understanding some of the terminologies that are being used. I do feel that we needed to have an in-depth understanding and explanation. And when we get, when we, and one of the reasons I'd say that is because sequential seems to be the buzzword at the moment, but I would reckon not many of us understood what sequential was a few months ago, and still we started getting a lot of information from the residents of Cranley to help us understand that, and I think a briefing on behalf of officers would have helped us to do that. The other thing about this report, it repeatedly ignores the guidance and the policies, including those from the NPPF. Why do we have policies if we continue to ignore them? It ignores Cranley Parish Council, who also raise concerns, and witness the village hall full of distressed residents in despair as another wave of development is about to hit the Cranley greenfields. Don't get me wrong, I'm not against development in principle, but I am against development in this completely inappropriate, and this is completely inappropriate development. There's pages and pages and pages of this, we could be here all night, Chairman. So rather than focus on too much of the detail, because I think we can get focused and bogged down a lot on flooding and other issues which are very, very serious, I'd like to explain three reasons why I don't believe this is an appropriate development. Why? Because it's on a greenfield. I keep saying it, and I'm sorry, I'm boring, I know, but I've been saying it for years now, and I'll keep saying it until someone listens. The NPPF clearly states that we should be considering our greenfields before our brownfields. Not only is this a greenfield, but by now, and virtue, it is an exception site. Why? Because it's exception to policy, which means it does not have, does not have the same protection of policy as a brownfield, or a real exception site, because there's no policy for this kind of site. So we're left vulnerable to interpretation and manipulation. Another thing that I find of great sadness is that a greenfield that has many beautiful trees, if you look at page 13 of the report, 129 will be sacrificed, and many in the ancient woodland sacrificed at the expense of a road. Speakers have already mentioned this greenfield site is an evidence-based, proven flood zone with an inappropriate applied and failed sequential test. And if we go back to the understanding of the meaning of what a sequential test is, in a sentence, the aim is to steer new development to areas with the lowest probability of flooding. So what's the applicant done? It places it smack-bang in one of the worst possible places, putting future homes at risk from flooding. On this alone, it is grounds for question about the catchment area. And so far, we've talked about the 15 sites and the SMMR which relate to Cranley. Why can we not apply the catchment area to the whole of Waverley? Why does it have to be restricted to Cranley? We've already said, and that's where one of my contradictions come in with the WSA report, I mean, it sort of looks at Cranley in isolation, Cranley's not an isolated, not an isolated spot, it could have looked at it in more detail. Residents and stakeholders in Cranley so concerned they put their money where their mouth is and provided the information that gives you full explanation. Why again? Let's, let's look at some of the more serious issues here. Number of housing, affordable and access. This is an outline planning application on a site that's expensive to develop because of mitigation circumstances. Numbers are subject to a full planning application later. It's not our fault that the developer can't afford to develop this site, that's not, that's not our problem, it's the developer's problem, it's not ours. And if you go to page 12 of your report, and you look at the breakdown of the 30% of affordable housing that is quoted, quite frankly, it's a massive insult. Offset against a £600,000 sweetener, or as stated, offered by the applicant based on their commercial view of avoiding the possible cost associated with the planning appeal and the benefits of our company securing an early consent. That to me sounds like a threat. It's not a community that offered some, it is a threat, and I don't think it's right. There's no valid, adopted, evidence-based housing figure. Yes, we have the figures from GLH, but today, this still remains in draft form. But I will say this, the only figures that we do have are those that are taken from the social need, social housing register. And I wonder what this particular development will do to remove people from that list, if any. Now, a very serious issue in my mind, and I think you've got to live, work and understand Cranley to, to understand just how dangerous this is, is the access. Hypothetically speaking, if we go ahead tonight, and in the future, there's... Hypothetically speaking, if we go ahead tonight, and in the future, there's an application that says 424 houses are the numbers, are we really saying that we're just going to have two access points? Do you know, I kind of, listening to some of the stuff earlier, I wanted to say without being facetious, is someone having a laugh here, you know, at our expense? Is Eric Pickles going to come through, running through the door and go, surprise, surprise? I mean, it's beggars' belief that we would have this development on this scale of two access points. Now, let's look at the access that they're going out to. Noel Lane going south. Anyone who's been on a site visit will note, will have got to admit that it was ludicrous. It's serious and it's a dangerous road. Noel Lane, go to page 13, look at the highway network improvements. Point one, how? There's no footpaths, it's pitch black, it leads to the wilderness towards Horsham and the 281 on rural country lanes. Noel Lane merging onto the High Street, which is already congested, and a bottleneck which goes north. Marks and Spencer's and Take It To The Curb operate businesses that spill over into the road, resorting frequently during the day, reverting traffic to one-way chaos. There's a photograph, clearly seen at the top photograph on page eight of your report, you can actually see that happening. That's a common daily occurrence. The white section seen in the photograph, and if you go to the photographs, I'd be grateful because I do think the structure of the road can be misleading. One of the junctions seen on this photograph is not part of the highway, it's the entrance and exit car park leading to Sainsbury's Delivery Depot. It's not a public through road or part of the highways. Essentially, it's a private road. The photo below shows another junction. Once again, it's not part of the highways, it's the entrance to Marks and Spencer's car park, which is that one. An access on to Orfold Road. Has anyone been along that stretch of road in the last few weeks? Seriously? Has anyone been there? Because then this is ludicrous. I noticed, though, having said that, that Surrey County Council have just released a statement that says on the 7th of January. Cynical or what? They are talking about improvements, but are they going to be sufficient? The question that I wanted to ask earlier of the highways is that there's so much work being done on the highways, all pre this application, is the highways dependent on monies from developers to do their work? So that makes me very cynical about this whole approach. Now, if you're going to make the Orfold Road successful, you need to dig it up, you need to start again, you need to widen it and put another section in so as you'll get three lanes of traffic, otherwise it's just not going to work. Anyone driving down that road at the moment drives down the middle of the road because the verges are so dangerous. I don't know anywhere else in Cranley, but the number of houses with no through road and only two access points, beggars believe that this would ever be considered. The proposed development and flood evacuation plan fails to demonstrate the required element of safe access and escape route. This would be contrary to paragraph 102 and 103 of the National Planning Policy Framework. How would we deal with a serious incident at the centre of this site in the future? As stated in the report, pages 13 and 14, highways, sustainable improvements, they dictate the way people should live, they give no accounting for extent of works needed, they talk about improving services outside their remit, i.e. enhanced bus services. And why again? Now, I'm going to refer to what I call the cumulative effect. Basically, what I mean by that is putting it all together, let's have some joined-up thinking. But before I go down that road, I'd like to make reference to...
Sorry, Mrs. Forizewski, I do have a number of other speakers here, and you've been going for nearly 15 minutes now.
Don't worry about it, Chairman, I will tie up very, very quickly. I think it's important that as a local resident and member, ward member, that members get a real, clear picture. So please, try and refrain me from getting the point across. Anne Milton...
If I might just butt in, please, Mrs. Forizewski, as I say, I do have other members wishing to speak, and I wonder if we could move ahead a little faster.
Yes, I will do, Mr. Chairman, but I don't think that's fair to try and curtail a local ward member and what we have to say.
I'm just trying to speed things up.
I know, Chairman, but I've got plenty of time. We've spent a lot of time and effort on this, so has the residents and so have the members. We get this wrong, it won't be because we haven't...
Mrs. Forizewski, we have all spent a great deal of time on this.
Anyway, Mr. Chairman, as I've just said, our own MP was so deeply concerned that she wrote to all members, and I won't actually, on the advice of officers, display what she wrote on here, but I would point out that she did say, "I would again urge planning committee to reject the above planning application. Local people have overwhelming concerns about flood, traffic problems, lack of affordable houses, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera." So, the accumulative effect. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, let's get back to another prominent minister. Eric Pickles announced on the 18th of the 12th that when dealing with planning applications, councils can wait until the lead local flood authority, in this case Surrey County Council, after the 6th of April 2015, become the statutory consultancy for this matter, and they have already received government funding in terms of the SUDs. My fellow councillor beside me, councillor Stuart Stenner, is more aware and clearly thinking on these matters than I am. Whilst the accumulative effect is not a material planning consideration, I strongly believe in the current planning climate, it's foolish, short-sighted, naive to consider applications in isolation. The rider impact is so great, failing to do so will result in a negative knock-on effect right across the borough. We have a duty of care to ensure we deliver an infrastructure which is sound, sustainable, and works. It's simply not good enough to rush me or hope it works as it has to work. We have to face the fact that this is not going away, and if we don't get it right, the consequences will be ongoing for generations to pick up the pieces. Cranley is the smallest of the four main settlements, but accepted along with Farnham, has to take the lion's share of the housing need. It's not protected by the Green Belt, and that's the only reason why. The accumulative impact on what's happening currently is there are one, two, three, four pending applications which amount to 959 houses, one of which is approved of 125 Amlets Lane, total in 1,084, and that excludes current and pending smaller applications already in the system. On the grounds, I think we have every absolute reason to look at... Oh, hang on a minute, you've unrattled me a bit, so I'm going to go back, and I'm not going to miss anything out. So I would ask you, what impact would that have on the roads, transport, population, health provision, schools, et cetera, et cetera? Also, it's important to note that Cranley will become one massive construction site up until 2021. The Downs Link is a future transport corridor which will be jeopardized by two footpaths in this application. Come on, let's be brave, let's have a vision, let's not be scared, let's take it seriously and have an honest debate about the future. We can't pretend or hope it will sort itself out, it won't. Let's get real, Cranley has one road in and one road out, it's going to take something super special, very big, to deliver what Cranley needs in the future. Finally, Mr. Chairman and members, to allow approval to build 425 houses on a greenfield in a flood zone in the knowledge better alternative sites are available, leaves one to try and understand the logic behind the madness. I could not have on my conscience to approve a scheme that could deliver the same hardship as what happened in 2013. And with regard to my fellow councillors and any comments they have, I look forward to listening to. But I, for one, on what I've heard so far, I categorically reject the officer's recommendation to approve this application. No numbers of conditions can be resolved to make this application acceptable. So on the grounds of a sequential test, access, surface water, loss of ancient woodland, all sufficient planning reasons enough to put forward an alternative recommendation not to grant planning permission and object. There's better sites, better places, less risk, and an opportunity with proper, thought-through, joined-up infrastructure plan that can deliver our objectives in the future. Let's not waste this opportunity or allow intimidation of appeal threat to get in the way of the opportunity. Let's look at the bigger picture. People in Cranley, the Cranley Society, are serious, and rumours of a judicial review should not be dismissed. That's not a threat, it's a reality of the passion of the local people of Cranley.
Sorry to have kept you waiting, Mr. O'Grady, it's your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I'll try not to take quite so long. A number of things trouble me. First of all, I'm still slightly unclear as to the constitutional position we're now in with regard to the letter from the Secretary of State, who chose at four o'clock this afternoon to intervene in this matter, but only to allow us one out of the two possible choices. I'm not clear, whilst I understand what you're saying about we could make an imprinciple decision, I'm not actually clear that our constitution necessarily allows that. I'm no expert in this, but I've never encountered this position previously. Leaving that aside, many of the points that councillor Forizewski and indeed, excuse me, councillor Mrs. Ellis made earlier, I have great sympathy with around the area of infrastructure and flooding. We have, in this chamber, particularly with Western Planning, I'm a Farnham member, on a number of occasions, had our hands tied because the statutory consultees all effectively said we should grant permission on something which we knew we shouldn't because the infrastructure wouldn't cope. We knew that there was flooding, we were told there wasn't flooding, and we could point at the pictures with people standing in waders in the middle of it. So whilst it is true that we have been told that we can defer the decision until Surrey County Council becomes the statutory consultancy for flooding, we are where we are, and we're here tonight to make a decision. I'm therefore not entirely clear where we go, because whilst some of us may be minded not to grant this, I'm not completely clear on the planning grounds on which we could refuse it. If the statutory consultees have said we should, and there is no reason not to, that is setting us up for appeal. And whilst I understand what Mrs. Forizewski said, unfortunately, we are where we are, and the law is the law. However, back to my initial point, given we actually only have one option open to us due to this, what I'm going to describe as an abuse of power by the Secretary of State at this late stage, I'm not entirely clear where we can go from here. We can't vote to approve it, we can have an imprinciple vote of some sort, but I'm not at all clear what that really means, or we can vote to refuse it and set it up for an appeal because we've already been told that on a technical basis, there is no reason not to. So I'm very confused as to where we now sit. I'd be grateful for some advice from the officers as to where we sit constitutionally on this.
I think Elizabeth will help you out.
Thank you, Chairman. Really, just to repeat again the advice that Matthew started with, and then Barry's already made reference to, it is unusual, but it's not completely unprecedented, the power does exist in the Town and Country Planning Act for the Secretary of State to intervene in planning decisions. There are certain types of decision which we always have to refer to the Secretary of State if we're minded to make a decision, or you're minded to make a decision. An example of that is granting permission in the Green Belt, and that's what happened in the Bramley site. The Secretary of State retains the power to call in applications if he so chooses, even if it's outside of the general criteria of Green Belt and flooding, if there's an objection. And in this particular instance, we have received the letter which you've received and been tabled tonight, has indicated that he's using that power to say to the council that you are not in a position to grant permission, issue a planning permission on this development. What you are able to do, however, is issue a refusal, an actual decision, because this is basically a power that the Secretary of State's seeking to use to intervene in any decision to grant. But, you said, councillor O'Grady, that you felt that meant that you couldn't debate it. As we started off by saying, that isn't the case, that's why we've encouraged the debate to ensue. It needs to carry on being assessed on its merits, and the council should come to conclusion whether it either wants to refuse permission, in which case it could issue a decision, or if it is minded to grant permission, we would then need to alert the Secretary of State to that point, that was your resolution, that you were minded to grant permission. And at that point, the Secretary of State will indicate to us whether he wants to call in the application for public inquiry. Now, he may decide not to, and come back to us to say, no, I've looked at it, I don't want to call it in, in which case it would come back to the council to decide then whether to issue a grant of planning permission based on your resolution. I hope that's made it clearer. The other point, I did just want to pick up, Chairman, been a couple of references to the position of the lead local flood authority, and the fact that from April, the government has indicated that the lead local flood authority will become a statutory consultancy for purposes of surface water flooding. That will mean, for purposes of the Development Management Order, we will be consulting the lead local flood authority as a matter of course on such applications. But it doesn't mean that an application such as this, which precedes the date of April, is in any way flawed, it's still a material consideration, and you'll see from our report that we've taken into account surface water matters very fully. We've had the advice from the Environment Agency, and then, in this instance, the lead local flood authority has already given us their view that they are happy with it, albeit they're not yet the statutory consultancy. So there hasn't been any lack of advice on this position, albeit that they haven't yet become the statutory consultancy. So I hope that's clear on that matter as well. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Is that clearer, Mr. O'Grady?
Well, it's no less clear.
Okay.
Just to be clear, Elizabeth, if we were minded to approve, we would not need to have another meeting if the Secretary of State said, get on with it. So this is not an interim situation. I want to be quite clear that any decision, were it to be taken tonight, to approve, could result in the approval becoming, how shall we say, implementable.
Thank you. Absolutely right. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Moving on then, Mr. Stenner.
Thank you, Chairman. Firstly, I agree with everything that has been said by my colleagues here tonight, and I'm astounded at the amount and the size of the development, which to me is absolutely not on. I won't bore you with professional opinions because I don't have them, but I am an expert in my own right, having run my own company in Cranley for some 46 years, and I did all the excavation work for the Orfold Sur, the Cranley Storm Drains, and also back as far as the Cranley Surers. And I can assure you that I'm quite surprised to hear Mr. Lomax say about the underwater tanks, they're going to be a meter below the ground, or the water is a meter below the ground, and in Cranley, the water doesn't go anywhere, it just sits in wheeled clay, and it just builds up and up and up. And when we get to the period of the end of October, when the water rushes down out of the hills, when the ground is fairly hard, it pours off, and that's when we get the flooding problems in Cranley to its worst extreme. Last year was exceptional, 1990 was an exceptional year, also when Guildford flooded. And we have to remember that it doesn't stop there. When these drains and stormwater drains and rivers run, there is only one outlet for that water, and it's down the mainstreams. There is only one capacity. After that, it either backs up, and then people down the other end of Cranley, when we've done the Amlets Lane, because it'll all bulk up, will be flooded, even as last year, in December, there were houses in Avenue Road with water within half an inch going in the house. So if you start getting water rushing down, we are going to have flooding, without a doubt. We're heading into wetter times, more stormier times, and the water is going to go somewhere because it can only go out one way. It would be like trying to put an extra 10 trains an hour into Guildford, from Guildford to Waterloo. They'd all finish up at Waterloo, and they wouldn't go anywhere. And that's what's going to happen here, we're going to have dramatic flooding, and these houses are going to flood, and I would like it put on record that I'm totally against what they're trying to do here. And in future, when it does flood, if this is passed tonight, I think Waverley should be held responsible. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stenner. Mr. Edwards?
Thank you, Chairman. Before coming to the meeting, I was going through the papers, I had three reservations about this application. One was the flooding, which we've all heard about. One was the highways, because the ingress and egress is very tight there, and one was the green space. Now, I'm satisfied that the flooding and the highways have been addressed from the officer's report and report we've here tonight. I know it's very easy for me from hazy made to say, oh, well, you know, it's Cranley and it's going to clear, and I've visited the site, and I can understand how it does get flooded. But, Environment Agency says it's okay, reports say it's okay, highways are the same. With regard to the greenery, I am a bit of a tree hugger occasionally, and I have visited the site, and it's going to be a great loss to Cranley. However, it's situated in an area which is very... very close to the High Street, so there's easy pedestrian access, as far as I can see. The roads are very tight, but all in all, I think I'm in favour of this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Edwards. Mrs James?
Chairman, thank you very much. I've got two relatively simple questions, and I promise I will not go over too many minutes for you. The first one relates to this term viability, and what I'm trying to do is resolve in my own mind and possibly in other councillors' minds, how this, shall we say, applies to this application. Viability, as far as I'm concerned, translates into effectively delivering profit to the developer, which they can then use to cross-subsidise and develop the affordable housing. And what we have got in this application is a phasing, as I understand it, four phases. If anybody in the committee were swayed by the affordable housing argument this evening, and it's a doubt still in my mind, I want to hear the answer, please, can I hear and understand how the affordable housing component is going to be delivered according to the six-year phasing? Is it push-loaded, front-loaded, or is it back-loaded, or is it phased equally across the whole period? That's the first one. The second one is this aspect of the sequential test, but I'm going back to something that the Community and ONS Committee looked at much, much earlier in twenty fourteen. And what we said at that stage, and the reason I'm raising this is because it's, for me, it represents a fear which could be exploited by the developers at appeal, is that if we have a scenario whereby, according to the document, the council strategic flood risk assessment is not being questioned, despite the fact it was developed in two thousand and nine, despite the fact that this is a document produced pre all of these big and major developments, can the officers give us some reassurance that we can actually rely on that to justify what we're putting forward as part of the support that the officers are making for a granting of the application? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Officers?
Thanks very much, Mr Chairman. In relation to the first question about affordable housing, condition forty-two, if approved, says that the developer must put forward a scheme for provision of affordable housing, and that scheme shall include the timing of the construction of the affordable homes in the phasing, its phasing relation to occupancy of the market housing. So there is a control that the local authority has with regards to when the market homes and affordable homes would be delivered. So there is control, whether it's front-loaded or back-loaded, it's really up to members how they see that condition forty-two, and if they're minded to approve, we'll take their advice on board. With regards to the flood risk assessment undertaken by the applicants, it has been endorsed by the Environment Agency with regards to the modelling on-site. The Environment Agency have said that with regards to the modelling on-site, they are happy, and they are content, and they agree with the findings of WSP. And that's where we are. They also go on to say that it does meet what Cranley's wider flood risk modelling will be, and I spoke to the EA today, and they're looking to have revised maps out sometime towards the end of this year, possibly or next year. But this site has been endorsed by the Environment Agency with regards to the modelling. I hope that answers your question.
Chairman, thank you. Can I just come back to this issue of phasing? Because we've got a very, what I call woolly, condition there, and if any of my fellow committee members were minded to still be swayed by this affordable housing, if we wanted to approve it, and I make the point that I'm not in favour of this development at all, but if we wanted to, how can we strengthen that to actually ensure that it's the affordable housing that gets delivered first? Because I just don't think that's viable. But if, you know, if that's an argument that's being put forward to say, tick the box here, grant the permission, and all of a sudden, a major issue to do with our affordable housing's going to be solved, I'm not convinced by that.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Whilst we have the condition number forty-two with regards to phasing, it can also form part of the legal agreement, requiring that phasing plan to be put in. And ordinarily, you wouldn't have a scheme that delivers all the affordable housing first. It would be delivered in line with market housing, because the market housing ultimately is there to cross-subsidise the delivery of that market, of the affordable. So there will be a phasing of market homes built and some affordable homes built, and that will be subject to a legal agreement, so we have the tightest possible control over it, and it'll also be subject to condition number forty-two. Thank you.
Any other speakers, members? Miss Thompson?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I have a question first for officers. I've looked through the conditions, and I cannot find conditions that refer specifically to mitigation for the ancient woodland. Now, it's quite important that there's a buffer zone around that ancient woodland, and I can't see any reference to it at all.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. So this would be caught by the reserve matters conditions, being landscaping, and it's also part of, as you said, condition fifteen, which is the landscaping scheme hereby approved should be carried out strictly in accordance with agreed details, and should be carried out within the first planting season. We have a landscaping management plan, condition, we have condition fourteen, landscaping works to be submitted. So there is lots of control around the ancient woodland in the wider landscape context. If members think that needs to be bolstered in some way to provide the extra protection, that can be incorporated into those conditions.
Well, thank you. The Natural England has advised that the proposals as presented have the potential to adversely affect woodland classified on the ancient woodland inventory, and they refer us to their standing advice. And part of that standing advice has to be a specific buffer zone around the woodland, not just, you know, part of a landscaping plan. It's actually a buffer zone where you have semi-rural land that is left to be just that, a buffer zone. I think, yes, Elizabeth?
Only, Chairman, if that, members so wished, we could then suggest an amendment to condition fourteen to include, perhaps a reference to, to include a specific buffer zone in relation to the ancient woodland area. As Barry has said, we would anticipate normally being picked up at reserve matters, but if it was a particular point of principle, it could be incorporated as an amendment at this stage, taking your very valid point.
Well, yes, thank you. That is required, although they do say ancient woodland and veteran trees support a very large number of species, et cetera, et cetera, but the important and historic part of the landscape and cannot be replaced, because they take hundreds of years to develop. So the actual mitigation is limited, just because of, by dint of the fact that they are ancient and you can't reinvent them. And that is overriding concern for me, actually, is the effect on the ancient woodland, because it is going to be pretty much devastated by a road going through the centre of it, because it's just going to be affected profoundly by that. And actually, I really think we do need to have appropriate measures put into conditions for that. I also would like to refer to the DEFRA Document Keepers of Time, because that's a statement of government policy on England's ancient and native woodland, and the policy area for the protection of the resource of ancient woodland is, and it states that the outcome should be that the existing area of ancient woodland should be maintained, and that no significant or unnecessary loss of veteran trees. And unless there are real alternatives to this site, which I believe there are, we haven't demonstrated that we are preventing harm to ancient woodland. So that is the first real concern that I have for this application site. I agree with other councillors, I'm not confident that the sequential test has been properly assessed, and I echo councillor Mulliner's concerns on that point. And the only other point that I wish to raise specifically, and which I think is important, and I don't think has come up yet, is irrespective of whether or not the local and neighbourhood plans are forerder enough to be considered as emerging, the use of this area of land for homes doesn't make, to me anyway, good strategic sense for Cranley. Cranley is an important, well, I would almost call it a town now, a market town, and it serves a significant and growing hinterland. And we can't look at a site like this without looking at future development, particularly Dunstable, and how that will impact on the use of Cranley. It will be a commercial centre for ever increasing, in fact, thousands more houses potentially, and therefore you need the centre to grow, and to use the one site that actually backs on to the High Street, and use that totally for housing. And now, that might be sustainable for the residents of the proposed application site, but the sustainability of Cranley as a centre for the rest of the residents of Cranley and its hinterland is something that really does need to be considered, particularly when you're thinking of car parking, you're thinking of commercial growth, you're thinking of community facilities that will have to increase. The town centre needs room to grow, and it needs room for cars, because people are not going to abandon their cars. With a growing population, the last people, thing that people let go is their car. They'll admit they need a hearing aid before they give up their driving licence. And we will have to have centres, community centres, that provide services and provide access for people who don't live right on the High Street, and they will increasingly want to use their cars and park nearby. Now, it just seems to me that if you put all the housing bang up against the High Street, that's absolutely fine for the four hundred and twenty-five households in the development area. But what does it say about how Cranley in fifty and a hundred years' time, and we're talking about the lifetime of this development, we have to talk about the lifetime of the wider community. When you have houses being developed on Dunstable, not all roads will lead to Guildford. They will want to use their local town or village centre, and if they come in by car, which many of them will, they want somewhere to park, that doesn't mean they have to drive right through the High Street to get to the other end. And there you have a piece of land that is flexible, that can be used right across the piece for all sorts of community activity, and a huge variety of land use, and you're just blanking that out of any future development. I think it's very unwise.
Thank you very much. Sorry, did you wish to come back?
That's an appropriate point. I would like to respond to that, Chairman, if that's good. Just to say, I note that point, councillor Thompson, but I think it's important to remind members that they do need to respond to the application before them, rather than seeking to identify perhaps preferred uses. Unfortunately, what isn't before you is an application for an extension to the town centre or a car park. It is a residential development, so you do need to consider that on its merits. We have, however, been aware that there has been some concern perhaps about parking pressures as a result of this development. And there's a couple of points just to update you on. The head of Environmental Services has actually advised us that the current situation in Cranley is there is actually some capacity in the town centre, village centre car parks, in terms of, that is the statistical evidence, generally speaking, apart from on market days, there is generally some capacity in the two main village centre car parks. In terms of parking pressures that may result from this development, if it were to be permitted, there hasn't been a strong recognition that additional parking infrastructure should be delivered by this development. It's not something that's come out of the highway advice in any form, nor has it come out of any community interest. However, there is a pot of money that has been offered as part of the infrastructure contributions, which could theoretically be pushed towards parking, car park provision, if that is strategically seen to be a consideration. The other point to make is that the developers are actually interested in understanding parking needs of the existing, of the residents of the proposed development, and have indicated that there could be some provision made for, upon the site, for small area to facilitate residents' parking, if they wanted to actually get closer to the town centre. So some of these considerations have been taken into account. The longer-term picture is, if more development were to be permitted in Cranley, then parking, car park extensions and development in the town centre could be identified within the community infrastructure levy, infrastructure list, which obviously is the list of infrastructure projects that would come forward when the council has an adopted local plan. So it's not out of the question that future car park in provision could be made for the town centre, but my advice is it wouldn't be appropriate to refuse this development on the basis that it isn't a town centre car park. Thank you for that, Chair.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. I think that the head of Environmental Services obviously does not live in Cranley, and I did raise this matter within myself, and I could point out there have been many occasions, in fact, even on a Sunday, where you find Village Way Car Park absolutely full. However, I won't go down that particular route at this point in time. Mr Reynolds, I believe you are the next speaker.
Well, just very briefly, I do have grave concerns about a number of the issues that fellow councillors have raised this evening. First one is flooding. A small development near me in Charter House was approved under appeal, because Wavely turned it down, well, we turned it down for various different reasons. But that was built in what is a flood zone, I don't know whether it's one, two, or three, but the result was two brand-new houses, which had only just been occupied by residents, were flooded this time last year. So these things do happen, and even if the advice from agencies who should know the statistics, you know, they don't get it right all the time. So we've got to be very, very careful about this sort of thing. I think this, on the face of it, is a very attractive location for development, being so close to the town centre, but as councillors have pointed out, you're losing a lot of lovely green field space and ancient woodland. I think the amount of houses is far too much. I think the traffic modelling that we see in front of us, you know, when I look at it, development with three hundred and fifty houses on one side, there'll be at least seven or eight hundred cars attached to that development, and, you know, some of the traffic movements are saying there'd only be a hundred and fifty movements between eight o'clock and nine o'clock in the morning. I find probably rather inaccurate, myself. So there's a combination of things that make me feel really rather reluctant to approve this, but again, I will listen to other colleagues.
Thank you very much. Just one point, Mrs Ellis, I believe you have indicated that you wish to speak, but I have to say, it will be towards the end of the debate, rather than in the middle of it. So if we could bear with me, thank you very much. Mr Byer?
Thank you, Chairman. Well, I wanted to come in at this point because of the question by Jane Thompson with regard to ancient woodland. We have, at the moment, a stampede of developers all rushing to develop around Cranley, largely because it's land beyond the Green Belt, and therefore much more easy perhaps to have applications considered. I understand, I have hearsay evidence, that some of the developers actually started talking to each other and then stopped. One of them actually offered a route through the land that they were preparing to develop at some stage for access, and that would have taken away the need to use the ancient woodland as an access road. If you remember, this application is outline planning permission for development of the land, but full planning permission for the two accesses. And as part of that, we want to destroy ancient woodland, which seems bizarre to me when there are alternatives. And if we've got so many different people, companies who want to develop land, and we know most of these ourselves already, that they're there, they're waiting, applications have come in, and they're being considered at the moment, and yet we're not asking them, or we're not requiring them, to work together to actually provide a much better solution, if that's the right thing to do. And again, the ancient woodland route, this site is divided into one-third and two-thirds. So you've got an access from the, from one end, the Noel Lane End, which is for the rich people, with their five-bedroom houses, et cetera. They don't want their Rolls-Royces scratched as they go out through the road there, so there are going to be fewer cars accessing that. there are going to be fewer cars accessing that road. But the other end is for everybody else, and you've got what I think, I can't remember the numbers now, but well over 300, I think, and are used one entrance, and no other entrance, no other road access, and it happens to be through the ancient woodland. I think that is wrong. I think there should be more, and I think Mary made the point that there should be more than one access road into this site at each end perhaps, certainly at the eastern end, is it, no, the western end, that, I'm getting my orientation wrong here, but whatever, the end with the largest number of vehicle movements likely, to have more than one access point. But I think that we ought to get the developers to talk to each other and to provide alternate routes if this is considered to be a suitable site. I personally don't think it is, but nevertheless, I think the point about the ancient woodland is important. It should be protected. In the Swallows Tile Site, there was a long, long argument about using the ancient woodland there as a simple cycle and footpath route, and local residents there, some were in the gallery tonight, I think, argued strongly against using that ancient woodland for a cycle and footpath route, no vehicle movement at all. Here, we're talking about a full-blown two-lane road, I presume, and for the number of vehicles and movements that are going to be there, the pollution that's going to happen within that region and the damage to the ecology there because of that, apart from chopping a damn great chunk through the middle, I think is unacceptable, and it should be refused on that point alone. Access is not acceptable on that end of the site.
Thank you very much. Mr Gates.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to thank all the speakers so far because it is clear that there are very sincerely held views on this, and I'd like to thank the officers for a very comprehensive report, which I don't feel at all is one-sided. I know this has been alluded to. Councillor Edwards will be surprised perhaps to know that I have some sympathy with his view, and councillor Grady has gone so far as to make the rather obvious statement that the law is the law, and we've been reminded that we are where we are, not in some utopia where we can revisit every application with a view to improving other aspects of the town or village. I think we do have to be very rigorous in coming to a conclusion here. I think we need to have specific planning law-based objections that not just in themselves sustain a legal objection, but that demonstrably also override the benefits of the scheme. As a perhaps slightly unpopular aside, I would notice that the people who are not consulted about developments such as this are those in Waverley who are in desperate need of affordable housing right now, and those who are in need of housing full stop in an expanding population, which is the case. They are not consulted, and I think that the debate does show that alternative views obviously exist on this. It is actually quite easy to see the validity of both sides of this argument. It would obviously be very simple if it was a 100% obvious way to vote, but there isn't. However, in my view, on balance, I can see a better than 50% reason for accepting the officers' recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Gates. Mr Stenick, you wish to come back?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm somewhat confused. We have a site outlined in front of us in red. We're going to put 425 houses on it, that's what's proposed, and our officers are saying that the developers are prepared to listen to us and put car parks on it. Well, I don't know whether it's a magic site. I really can't see, without going into the ancient woodland, where you're going to park any more cars if you're going to put that amount of houses. The car parks in Cranley, most days I would say are 90% full. I just don't understand, and perhaps you could answer that, is there something I'm missing or not understanding? I really, you know, don't see where you can park cars. And the other thing I'd like to say is, I'm sure that Mr Pickles, who's taken the trouble to come in at four o'clock this afternoon, has got a very good reason to want to look at this, and there's so much going on, and I do apologise for, lots of people have sent me emails, not having that time, but if you could just answer that one question, where are we going to park, say, 40, 50, 100 cars and that? Can you see anywhere? Am I missing something? Thank you.
Thank you. Barry, did you want to come in?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. What we're not suggesting is the developer will provide a public car park. What we're suggesting is the developer will increase the amount of visitor car parking spaces in and around the area as identified on screen in front of you. What we do have here on screen in front of you is an area that's put aside for community building. Now, it's been decided that community building may not be required on this site, and a contribution is sought of £160,000. Now, that building there could form a small area of parking to serve the application site. It's not to serve the wider public, it's to serve the people who live on this site. So this area here, but it is ultimately a matter of layout which is subject of a reserve matter if members are minded to grant permission. And there is space on site to increase provision of car parking. If I may just go back briefly to the issue of the ancient woodland. Now, I'm not for one second suggesting that ancient woodland is not important, because it is, but we must remember an ancient woodland is not designated ancient woodland because of the quality of the trees. It is only designated an ancient woodland because the trees date from 1600. Now, the application is supported by a tree survey, rather a large tree survey, that assesses each of the trees to be removed, and the overwhelming majority of those trees which are to be removed are category C trees, which are of low quality and value, inadequate condition to remain until new planting is established, or they're young trees. So whilst I'm not suggesting for one moment the loss of ancient woodland is generally acceptable, in this case we think it is because of the wider benefits, there is an opportunity here to replace what are trees of a grade B and C with higher quality trees and therefore bolster the ecological value of the site by strengthening those green roots through the site. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr Taylor Smith.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, the context for this and why we're here and why there's so many applications going through is the developer sees a sort of, perhaps a once-in-a-generation opportunity to capitalise on uncertainty in the planning policy. I find it very difficult sometimes as a member, we're directed to ignore issues of infrastructure and constraints of infrastructure which we living here are very much aware of. We're very much aware of, for example, the problems of travelling into Guildford along the road from Cranley in the morning, but we need to ignore those things apparently in terms of our determination of planning applications. I have a rather simple view of my role as a councillor, which is to defend inappropriate development before us, and that I think is important to bear in mind for all of us. I think this is a very, very significant application for Cranley. I'm not from Cranley, I'm not a councillor from anywhere near Cranley, but I see the significance of this for the size of the application in the context of Cranley, and we need to get this absolutely right. I am concerned about the flooding issue. Now, I'm a lawyer by trade. I try never to act as a lawyer in this council chamber, however, if someone sends me a council's opinion from a planning barrister from Landmark Chambers, and I read it, I read it and I take notice of it. I was sufficiently concerned when I read it this afternoon to phone up our officers to say, are we sure that we've got it right in relation to our application sequential test? Because this opinion seems rather clear. And I was told that we had not sought an opinion, a contrary opinion, on the legal merits of what we were doing, and that concerns me. I went back and had a look at the Planning Practice Guide, paragraph 101, and that says quite clearly, the aim of the sequential test is, the aim of the sequential test is to steer new development to areas of the lowest probability of flooding. Development should not be allocated or permitted if there are reasonably available sites appropriate for the proposed development in areas with lower probability of flooding. That is very, very clear to me, what that means, and that was quite clear to the barrister from Landmark Chambers. I'm not clear that we are applying that correctly, Waverley. That gives me a problem, and I guess gives me a significant problem for finding that I can agree with the officers on their conclusions on this application. Last winter, at the invitation of a local residence, I came and had a look at this site, and I thought initially, when I looked across from Hewitt's industrial estate, that I was looking at a lake. I'm not familiar with the site, but I asked them if that was a lake, and they said, no, it's a field. And that, to me, and I had a drive around the area, there was significant flooding over that area, and I know that from my personal experience, and I know that from the residents who have contacted me over recent months about this, is a significant problem with that site. I don't believe that the local objectors and residents who are objecting to this are against new homes being built. I don't believe that for one moment. I just simply believe that they are correct in their analysis that there are better sites available for development. So back to my role as a councillor, I think my role as a councillor is to turn down a development which I think is inappropriate, particularly where there are better options. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I just think it needs to go on record that the council's opinion assesses WSP's work, not the planning officer's report. The planning officer's report, whilst we arrive at the same conclusion, we, in conjunction with our own lawyers, have done so what we consider to be in line with the requirements. What council think of WSP's report is somewhat superfluous, because WSP's report supplies us with information on which we base our decision. So it's important to note that the assessment is of WSP, not of the planning report in front of you.
Sorry, thank you for allowing me to come back. Before Mr Mulliner does, I'm sure he will. I believe that actually the WSP are following the mythology used by the council, and I think council, council was commenting on that mythology.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. No, the council is commenting purely on WSP's report. Now, whilst I've said what we do, we arrive at the same conclusion at WSP, and indeed we use the same evidence as WSP, because the evidence that WSP has used is our evidence. So we've all used the same evidence, and we have assessed the sequential test in lines with paragraph 101 and 102 of the framework. In particular, 102 of the framework tells us, if following application of the sequential test, it is not possible, consistent with wider sustainability objectives, for the development to be located in zones with a lower probability of flooding, the exception test can be applied if appropriate. Now, what we're saying here as an authority is, when we look at those wider sustainability objectives, what are they? Well, they are what the sustainability appraisal into part one of the local plan tells they are. How does this site perform? It performs green on 24 of the criteria, better than the other sites in the schlar, far better than the 15 other sites. With regards to Hewitt's, which isn't assessed in part of sustainability appraisal into part one of the local plan, it's not assessed because, as we've discussed, that is not a deliverable site because it has its own policy objections. So I think it's important with regards to that sequential test, how we've arrived at the process is in line with the requirements of paragraphs 101, 102. We've discussed it with our lawyers in-house, and we consider that we've arrived at a robust judgement.
Thank you very much. Mr Mulliner.
Thank you, Chairman, for allowing me to come back. The first thing, just to put Mr Grady's mind at rest, my remarks were directed to, if council colleagues agree, the reason for refusal would be concern with the loss of countryside beyond the green belt, the harm being significantly and demonstrably greater than the deemed benefits from the application. And perhaps Mr Sims could confirm that that would be a reason for refusal, which would not offend any of the technical advice.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I mean, if members came to the conclusion that they felt the development caused harm to the character and intrinsic beauty of the countryside, that is not a technical conclusion, that is a matter of judgment, and would not offend any technical advice. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I mean, I was grateful for the amount of care that Mr Evans took to guide the committee on where they are constrained by the adoption of the NPPF. I think we just have to agree to differ. I agree with Mr Taylor Smith. I think if you read 101 and 102 as a lawyer, which occasionally one has to do in life, it is absolutely clear that you apply them separately in time, with the exception test coming after the sequential test. And there are no words which allow you to look at sustainability criteria when applying the sequential test. So the problem I certainly have, and one reason why even if I was persuaded by other matters to withdraw my objection, if you like, on the basis of the loss of the countryside, I just think we have unfortunately, and because the Landmark Chambers opinion arrived very late in the day, it would have been much better if we'd been able to find out about this much earlier, but I think we have put ourselves in very real risk of being taken to the High Court. And speaking as someone who does care about where the council tax goes, I really do regret when procedural errors can be used to cause us problems, and in many ways, I hope very much for the council's pocket that we, I do have agreement with other councillors, that we should refuse this, as this particular embarrassment will then not appear.
Thank you very much. Mr Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I intend to be brief because a lot has been said already. I mean, I think we have a very good report in front of us, and of course, it is a very significant application, and we have to deal with the application as it is, not as we would, might like it to be. I have every sympathy with local ward members and local residents, and the dilemma that we have, it seems to me, is that hearts and emotion says one thing, facts and independent reports and advice says another. And I think it's accepted by a lot on the committee that raising traffic, raising flooding as planning objections is, dead in the water is probably the wrong phrase to use, but it's going to have a problem because of the Surrey County Council highways advice that we have and all the advice we have on flooding from more than one quarter. And therefore, the grounds for objection are very limited. There is the one, of course, that we could use, that councillor Mulliner has just referred to, and the sequential test. As the third lawyer on this committee, I'm not going to join in with the rest of the legal opinion. We have obviously the advice from the council's lawyers, and I'm minded to follow the advice of our officers' legal advisers in this situation. But it is a problem, but I think we have a problem in having really good grounds, in my view, for legally coming up with planning objections that would be sustainable. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr Chairman, could I just comment a little? Stand by. Having seen this council's advice this afternoon, and having to address it quickly and hurriedly with my planning colleagues, when you look at council's advice, paragraph 31, he analyses paragraph 101 of the National Planning Policy Framework and the way WSP have approached it, and he sets out the paragraph 101 test, development should not be allocated or permitted if there are reasonably available sites appropriate for the proposed development in areas with a lower probability of flooding. And then he goes on to look at the four sites that WSP concluded are reasonably available, and they're numbered there. And indeed, if you look at paragraph 101, there is the approach set out, that first you look for the sites that can take development, that may be permitted if there are reasonably available sites appropriate for the proposed development in areas with a lower probability of flooding. So there you have the matchup between the guidance in paragraph 101 and the way council has analysed the site analysis as set out. Now, I discussed this with planning colleagues, these five sites, and Barry Lomax and Elizabeth and Matthew Forrest looked at the analysis, and it was clear. and Matthew Forrest looked at the analysis, and it was clear, applying the criteria that Barry, the planning officer, Mr. Lomax has explained to you, that those four, those five sites had to be discounted in favor of the application site. And that is the way we have approached this, and being satisfied, therefore, that being able to discount these sites on that basis, we could then apply the exception test, and thereby bring the application site, the subject of this application, it could be legitimately considered and brought forward to, as per the report. So that's my advice. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Barry. Sorry, Matthew, I thought, no, you're not. Okay, members, I do have a couple more speakers, and as the only other ward member, I would like to have my 10p as well. However, it is now 9:30, and it's advised here, meetings of the council would normally finish by 10pm, would they did, but at a convenient time before then, the mayor shall put, or rather, I will, as your chairman, shall put to the meeting the options of agreeing to a half hour extension to 10:30pm, at which time the meeting shall stand adjourned, continuing the meeting until the council has concluded consideration of the agenda, or adjourned the meeting. Mr. Gates.
I should like to propose formally we conclude the agenda. Thank you, Chairman.
You beat me to it, Mr. Goodrich.
Happy to second.
Are we agreed then that we will continue? I don't hear anything.
Agree.
Right, thank you very much. We will move on then to Ms. Thompson, you wish to come back?
Yes, just to elaborate on the objection that I uphold, the loss of irreplaceable ancient woodland. The point of ancient woodland is tidying it up and putting, pulling up trees that are of second quality and putting in new trees is not the point. Ancient woodland has been woodland, not that it's got 600-year-old trees, but that it has been in continuous use as woodland for 600 years. And that process includes the natural deterioration of trees that provide the habitat, and that's the key thing. There is also a very important element of ancient woodland, that they work from their central core. It is the core of the woodland that's important, and as you get farther out to the edges of the woodland, that habitat becomes less rich. So the, on this application site, the positioning of a two-lane main access road through ancient woodland does do irreparable damage. And I think I'm right in thinking that that's a material consideration, and I would like that to be noted. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've listened to the debate, obviously, and you won't, you'll also not be surprised to know that I've had significant discussions about this application with the officers for a few months now. And I think various issues have arisen over time, but one by one, to my satisfaction, they've been overcome. It's been a very tedious and long process. I think that councillor Gates and councillor Goodrich have put the balance better than I can, but on balance, I do support this application. We are going to have to build in the countryside somewhere in Waverley. This is one of the sustainable sites that has been assessed through our sustainability process. And although there are some perhaps technical issues which councillor Mulliner and Adam Taylor-Smith have raised now, I support the officers' decision in the end, and suggest that this application to approve these access points is agreed.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Varyzovsky, I hope it's brief.
Chairman, I would like to offer an alternative recommendation, if I may.
I haven't spoken yet, I do intend to have my say, so if...
I just thought I'd just leave that with you in case you didn't come back to me.
Consider it left. So, members, I am the other ward member for this, and I have to thank a great many members of the public up there in the Public Gallery, having written to me and bombarded me with emails throughout Christmas and well into the New Year as well. I do believe I have responded to all of them, bar I think last two, which came in fairly late this afternoon, and I apologize if you find that there is a sameness to my response in that I reserve the right not to commit myself as regards any planning application proposed or actually to be determined until I am in full possession of the facts. Hence, I go through the briefing, I have the agenda, I do a site visit, and we eventually get here, and I listen to what members have to say as well. And this, at last, is the time when I can actually come off the fence and have my say. I ask myself, does Cranley need more housing? Well, I've been saying at our annual parish meeting for the last six, seven years, yes, we do. We are a very aging population, and I'm one of the many old wrinklerys in the village now, who get older by the minute. We don't spend too much time in our shops, other than to buy food, and in consequence, we have a plethora of charity shops now, and we have a good half dozen or more, I believe, who, shops which stand empty as well. It's, it is indicative, I think, that our young people, as they go up, they get through school and further education, possibly even university, and ultimately, they feel the time to actually move out from under the parents' umbrella and look for somewhere to live. I have four daughters, and none of them can afford to live in Cranley. I find that very sad, because when I do eventually get old and heavily into my dotage, I would hope perhaps that they might live close enough to me to help out from time to time. I can't necessarily let it all fall on my wife. But I do believe that if we are to be a sustainable, vital, vibrant community, we do need to lower the age of our population. We do need more young people. We need affordable houses for our young people, and affordable houses do have to be subsidized. And in consequence, whilst I have had a number of emails that admit that we should have affordable housing in Cranley, quite a number of them do not agree that there should be a proportion of market housing available as well, which will actually subsidize those affordable houses. As regards just how many, I don't know. I've never said how many, certainly I've never said there should be 800. I don't know, I will leave that to the experts, but I believe there needs to be subsidized affordable housing for Cranley's young people, people with a very strong connection to Cranley. I don't suggest that we should be inviting the world's population into England's largest village, beautiful though it may be. I would like to see our young people being able to grow up and perhaps find their way, not only to a house of their own, but also the opportunity for a job fairly closer by as well. And this is why it worries me, that I think the MPPF advises that we should be using brownfield sites first. Great idea, but brownfield sites very often provide jobs and employment, and again, for our young people. The only site of any size within Cranley is Hewitt's Industrial Estate. There is now a planning application to do away with the employment opportunities there and build houses on it, and that too worries me as well. Beyond that, I have to say, I'm not an expert on flooding. I leave that to the Environment Agency and the County Council, NWSB or whoever. But the advice I have is really that to suggest that a reason, flooding as a reason for refusing this application would be a retrograde step. I am told it probably will not survive at an appeal. Prematurity, again, is another one that might possibly be a reason for refusing this application. It is unfortunate, of course, that Cranley has yet to provide something resembling a neighbourhood plan. Waverley is still months, at least months away from a local plan as well. So we are left with our local plan 2002 and the NPPF. And under those circumstances, Cranley, which does not boast vast amounts of green belt, although I have to say that I actually live in a small part of it, it is to my advantage, I suppose, but it wasn't necessarily the reason that I moved where we now actually live. But we don't have green belt, we don't have either, the SPA that Farnham has either. We are actually exposed, and exposed with an old local plan and an MPPF that has a presumption in favor of sustainable development. And that's where I actually get rather wound up. I do believe that development of any sort has to be sustainable, and in my view, this application, this proposal for 425 houses south of the Downs Link and south of the village is, in my view, not sustainable. I believe that we do need to consider whether or not we build in this particular area. I'm looking, for instance, on page 30 of the agenda. And one of the concerns, of course, many, many, for many, many years, there has been a presumption against building south of the Downs Link in Cranley. Now, the proposal is that we do, and if I look at that page 30, the maximum density areas of develop in this application are hard by the Downs Link. The Downs Link is a very, very peasant route, which a great many walkers, cyclists and so on, use on a daily basis. And if we are to provide an urban backdrop to that, I think it is wrong. As somebody has already pointed out, the larger market housing further there towards Noel Lane, that's fine, it is not, it is a density up to 25 dwellings per hectare. Great, fine, but 45 and 55 dwellings per hectare close by the Downs Link, I do think is wrong. It is inappropriate, and I don't think that it should be permitted. As regards the access to this particular site, some while back, we were first approached by Barclay Homes, before they'd ever put, I think, drawing pencil to paper, with a view to perhaps considering this site for development. We were shortly after that approached by another group of people, now it is an application for the Noel Park Initiative. They had ideas as well, developing south of Cranley. And then we had an approach from the then owners of Hewitt's Industrial Estate, also wanting to develop there as well. It seemed to me at the time that really it would be good if those three proposed developers could actually get together and do something that might be of benefit to Cranley and its residents, its community. It is unfortunate that we had one meeting where the parish council agreed we would invite all three together. It's unfortunate that it appeared on the front page of the Surrey Advertiser, secret meetings between developers and Cranley Parish Council. Quite ludicrous, quite frankly, because we have had private meetings with various people, developers and others in the parish council for years. But that label, secret meetings, I think then killed off any further opportunity to go down a route that might have resulted in something of benefit to the wider community of Cranley. Now, we don't, and yet the MPPF actively encourages parish and town councils to talk in the early stages with developers. Sadly, the Cranley Parish Council has now made the decision where we don't. Developers now have to have public meetings, and we might trundle on there if necessary. But I look at this proposal, the density, as I've already referred to, and I think it is totally wrong that the high-density areas are close to the Downs Link. I think also this will be of detriment to Cranley, not only as regards the Downs Link and its opportunities, the opportunities that it provides our community and indeed members of other communities as well. But I think this is a piece of green space south of Cranley, and I think I've already said that there used to be a presumption against any development south of there, of Cranley, but this is a pioneer beyond the green belt, and it is something of a green lung, I think, for the village. 425 houses, to my mind, is wrong. I'm told, I think it's come up this evening, that we only have 3.7 years of land supply for building. Why the hell, I ask myself, and I ask you members, why the hell is it that Cranley should provide sufficient land to its detriment to bring it up to five years? I really do not... Could I ask you, ladies and gentlemen, please do restrain yourself, the meeting might go on, but I'm trying not to, not to exceed Mrs. Varyzovsky's duration, but I feel that, but I feel that I might be allowed to. Whilst on the one hand, when we were first approached by Barclay Homes, I thought this was an opportunity, perhaps, close to the village, within walking distance of the shops and all the other facilities. And then, of course, in the fullness of time, I did realize that not too many people in Cranley actually walk to the shops, they have a tendency to leap into their cars. And whilst the county council might wish to encourage alternative means of transport, i.e. pedestrian and bicycles, I've already mentioned the fact that we are an aging population, and heaven forbid that we get more of us aging population onto bicycles anyway. And the courtesy of Boris Johnson, anyway, last year with the Ride London Surrey race means that we are cluttered up with bicycles anyway. So I'm not sure that we really need too many more. But this had a road that spans Noel Lane and Orfold Road. I thought in my wisdom or otherwise, with these three potential developers, they might have actually come to the conclusion, maybe, that access to the A281, which is the most obvious place where people will want to get to, to get their jobs, would be via Enbridge Road. And actually getting to the Enbridge Road through Hewitt's Industrial Estate, it would seem to me an ideal situation, you could actually come out onto Enbridge Road before it meets the Orfold Road anyway. And with sufficient care, we might have raised money to actually widen the canal bridge. What I find that we are doing now, I know we're not going to widen the canal bridge, we're not going to widen the bridge over the Downs Link either. So whichever way you slice it, we may get traffic lights, we've already got them on the Downs Link Bridge, we might get traffic lights on the canal bridge, but that's great. But if you're actually living in one of these 425 houses, and you have got to get to work, and the closest way you can actually get to work is hitting the A281, is anybody going to sit at a traffic light waiting to get across a canal bridge when they can nip off down the Orfold Road and try and hike straight onto the A281? No, I don't think they will wait at those traffic lights, they will all go down Orfold Road, and I think that is a major problem. It is a narrow country lane, it is in extremely poor repair as well, and let's be honest, I believe that there are grounds to say that the residual cumulative impact of development, not just here on the Barclay Homes site, but the Noel Park Initiative and Hewitt's Industrial Estate, is severe, and I think that is a sufficient ground for refusal of this. I add up the numbers. For those three applications alone, if they are permitted, we're talking 810 new houses. And that's an awful lot of cars. Let me try and move on quickly. The impact on the countryside, I've already referred to that, the highest density there will be close to the Downs Link, and it will impact, in my view, the countryside beyond the green belt, this piece that stretches out beyond there and provides this green lung to Cranley. and provides this green lung to Cranley. I think there will be a serious impact, visual impact, on the amenity there and on the trees as well. The impact on residential amenity, we should bear that in mind as well. And if you've got any number of cars, and I really can't imagine just how many, what I would say, quite probably, this is the vehicular... I was going to say extrament, but perhaps not. The vehicular effluent from all these houses funneling down Orfold Road. There are cottages on the Orfold Road, very, very close to that road. They have stood there for more than a century. There are other houses not so far down to the vast bridge and beyond that will suffer quite considerably by a huge volume of cars dashing down there to get onto the A281 and get the drivers to work. And they will be coming back as well in the evening. Somebody has already mentioned that there will be a need for additional car parking. Well, if we build on this site, that's probably the last piece of land available where it might be possible to extend the current parking arrangements, off-street car parking arrangements for Cranley. And I think that we have to take account of the fact that Cranley people have a tendency more to use their cars rather than their feet or their bikes. And I think we will ultimately need some additional car parking off-street. I'm not sure that I share the view of Waverley's officer, who I did ask, and indeed Elizabeth's mentioned, she's asked as well, that our car parks run at little more than 50% capacity. I don't believe it, and I'm quite certain that there isn't a single member of the public up there in the gallery who would share that view either. We are very, very short of car parking. And we always will be as long as we can continue to build. I was interested as well, and I am coming to the end, members, I can assure you, that the Clinical Commissioning Group doesn't think that there's a need for any changes at all here. Well, I ask members who live in Cranley, and most of the ladies and gentlemen up there do, have you ever tried to get a doctor's appointment in Cranley that you can actually get in less than two weeks? Because frankly, I haven't. And I can't really understand why the Clinical Commissioning Group thinks that the advent of more residents in 425 new houses could possibly not have a major impact on the services that we expect but don't necessarily get from our health centre. Members, I've gone on for some considerable time. I feel very, very strongly about this. I don't believe that we should be dumping on Cranley to satisfy the need for a five-year land supply for development. I don't believe either that there is any community benefit by doing that either. My view, I thank the officers. I think it is an excellent report. And I think they have researched it thoroughly. And whilst I understand their reasons for recommending approval, I'm sorry, but I cannot share that view. And I will be voting against the recommendation. Thank you very much. Mrs. Forisiewski.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Chairman. In view of the fact that you've extended the... or the committee have extended the delay to this, I have a small medical emergency. My diabetes is such that I've gone on longer than I should have done. Could we possibly have a two-minute break in order that I can go and take some sugar on?
Please do, Mr. Storey. I'm sorry to have inconvenienced you. Would it be all right with you if Mrs. Forisiewski adds a few more points to...
I understand if I leave, I can no longer vote.
I'll adjourn...
Chairman, on a point of order, may I suggest that you adjourn the committee for five minutes so that the rest of us too might take advantage of that opportunity?
I was about to suggest that we adjourned, actually. So, Mr. Storey, please. We will adjourn until your return. And I'm sure if other members wish a comfort break, please go ahead. We have the full complement back there again. Mrs. Ellis, if you have the need to correct any mistakes or misunderstandings, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chairman. I actually wanted to ask a question earlier, but that has since been addressed. But I'd like to thank all of my fellow councillors for their very careful consideration and for raising so many points that were very important that I didn't have time to raise in the mere four minutes that I'm allowed to speak. So, thank you very much. And I hope that my fellow councillors will be able to refuse this application.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Ellis. I can assure you, outside of this, you're not restricted to four minutes. But let's not actually go there. Members, I'm searching now for a recommendation. I believe, Mrs. Forisiewski, you were itching to say something.
Oh, I am, Chairman, I am. And you really had us go in there for a moment. Yes, Chairman, I'm delighted to hear many of the comments here and thank you for your indulgence in listening to me. But I would like to offer, I would like to put forward an alternative recommendation, that permission be refused on the grounds of countryside beyond the green belt, sequential test, access, surface water, loss of ancient woodlands...
Sorry to butt in again, Mrs. Forisiewski, but we have to deal with a standing recommendation first.
I can't help it, Chairman. I've just got to make sure I get my point across. Thank you.
Hang on to that thought. Members, can I invite you to look at the update sheet? The second unnumbered page, and it stretches to the third. I'm sure... Ah, thank you, Barry. Saves me reading it out. You have that recommendation there, that permission be granted. Can I see those members in favour? It will, of course. Yes. It is on the screen. Can I see those members in favour of that recommendation, please?
One, two, three, four, five, six...
And those against, please?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen...
That recommendation then does not stand. Mrs. Forisiewski, back to you.
Chairman, your indulgence overwhelms me. Thank you for letting me come back for the third time. But I would like to offer an alternative recommendation, that permission be refused.
I'm happy to second, actually.
Thank you.
Your recommendation?
Oh, it be refused.
Thank you.
On the grounds that it's countryside beyond the green belt, and sequential test is insufficient, access, surface water, amenities, and I'm sure there's a lot of other things that we could mention as well. Ancient woodlands, yes.
Mr. O'Grady?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just back to my earlier comments on this one. Whilst I understand the points Mr. Mullin made earlier and can go with those entirely, I couldn't support a recommendation like this on grounds which referred on a technical basis would almost certainly fail to appeal, so I would have to vote twice against.
Sorry about that. Members, there have been a number of suggested reasons. The density, for instance, its proximity to the green belt and its impact on land beyond the green belt. The impact on neighbourhood amenity. I think I mentioned houses down the Orfold Road. I think also somewhere... The residual cumulative impact of development being severe. I'm hoping that these are sufficiently sound reasons. I'm looking for some support here.
Am I allowed to add a further one, please? It will greatly harm the nature and character of the area. Thank you.
Nice try, Mrs. Ellis, but you're not a member of the committee. But I'm sure that somebody else did hear that. And I'm sure the officers have already written it down. There's the ancient woodland, which I'm sure that Miss Thompson wants to give us.
I was merely going to comment on the loss of agricultural land.
That's an interesting possibility as well. How are we doing so far, Elizabeth?
Chairman, may I just perhaps comment on some of these ideas and give members advice as to the likelihood of adequate defence of these in the event of any possible appeal? If I can take the ones that I feel that we would be able to support you in defensible reason for refusal first. There's been mention about the impact of the development on the countryside, so the visual impact of the development, and in particular the ancient woodland. And I believe you could construct quite a strong reason for refusal on that ground. You'll be aware, since the MPPF is no longer acceptable to talk about objecting principle to development in the countryside beyond the green belt, it has to be a more robust reason to identify harm to the intrinsic character of the countryside. So I would suggest perhaps some wording around that. The proposal, by virtue of the number of dwellings, scale, urbanising impact and loss and harm to ancient woodland, would cause material and detrimental harm to the character and setting of the existing village settlement, which I think is picking up on a point, councillor Ellis, and the intrinsic character, beauty and openness of the countryside, contrary to policies C2, D1 and D4 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan 2002 and paragraph 17 and 118 of the NPPF. And to add on to the end of that, the point that Matthew Evans stressed to you at the beginning, the adverse impact would significantly and demonstrably outweigh the benefits of the proposal when assessed against the policies of the MPPF taken as a whole. Hopefully, that captures all your concerns about the visual impact. There was then mention made about the concern that the development isn't sustainable, having regard to the tripartite definition of sustainability in the MPPF. Perhaps we could suggest some wording around that. The application, by virtue of its indicative details... So bearing in mind, this is in outline, so you can't really focus in on precise problem of densities as such at this stage. This is just an attempt on the applicant's part to demonstrate to you they could accommodate this level of development on the site. All that could change at reserve matter stage. So by virtue of its indicative details, has failed adequately to demonstrate that the proposal for up to 425 dwellings could be delivered in a sustainable way, contrary to paragraph six and seven of the NPPF and policies D1 and D4 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan, and that the adverse impact would demonstrably and significantly outweigh the benefits of the proposal when assessed against the policies of the MPPF as a whole. So those two reasons, I think, would be able to attract a fair amount of support on appeal potentially. I would guard against a reason for refusal on grounds of the sequential test. There's been a lot of discussion about the methodology. But as Barry did explain, and as our lawyer has also endorsed, we do believe we have applied this test properly. We believe we've come to the right conclusion. And we followed the guidance and we've made interpretation of the policy. So I think it would be unwise to refuse this application on grounds that we have applied the wrong methodology. The bottom line is, as far as we're concerned, and having regard to three sets of advice, technical advice, this scheme is acceptable in flood risk terms. So to some extent, it wouldn't achieve a huge amount in any event, but that's my advice to you. In relation to inadequate access, Richard hasn't had to say anything tonight for the Highway Authority, but the advice from the Highway Authority, subject to adequate mitigation and the improvement works that have been proposed, there is no objection, overriding objection in highway terms. So we would advise you not to include a reason for refusal on access grounds. I think the amenity impact is picked up on the wording I've suggested for reason one, as is the ancient woodland. The loss of agriculture is an interesting one. You'll see, we've dealt with it in the report. Our conclusion is that there is a loss of agricultural land. But the benefits of the proposal do outweigh that loss. So that could potentially be an argument that you put forward. But we would advise against that because it may be that some form of development is acceptable on this site going forward. And it does tend to suggest that you would want to hang on to this site in perpetuity for agricultural purposes. So that's possibly not a particularly strong argument, but that is your judgment. There was a discussion about being proximity to the green belt. I wouldn't advise you apply that because it is some distance from the green belt boundary. It is in the countryside beyond the green belt. And we've dealt with density. So I hope I've covered all the other issues raised. Hopefully, you'll be happy with the two reasons that I have suggested. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. Are members satisfied with the reasons as beautifully put by Mrs. Sims? We are... I think then, members, we are probably done. Oh, hang on a minute, sorry. Sorry, we need to take a vote on those conditions, on those reasons. Sorry?
We need to take a vote on...
I thought we already did.
No, we need to... We need to shake hands, we need to grant him...
So I'll be calling for a vote.
We're getting to it, Mr. Goodrich, we're getting to it. Mrs. Forisiewski, for the reasons beautifully stated by Mrs. Sims, I have proposed that this application be refused. One or two of us actually did second it as well. Can I see those members in favour of refusal?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen...
Those against?
One, two, three, four, five...
And any abstentions? One abstention. We're done now? Members, thank you very much. Thank you, David.
Chairman, had you expressed that as a proposal with those particular reasons, it might have been clearer what we're voting for?
I thought that was clear. Members, it's not often that these joint planning committees end with applause from the public gallery. Thank you for your time. Have a safe journey home.